Okay, everybody. Everybody, welcome to the February 16th, 2017 Planning Commission hearing. Mr. Rodriguez, could you take role?
Commissioner Thompson, absent. Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella.
Here.
Vice Chair Witscomb.
Here.
Chair Higgins.
Here.
Ms. Galarte, do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, et cetera?
Mr. Chair, we just have one correction to the agenda. Under item three, the consent item, the heading for that item reads, "Draft Six-Year Capital Improvement Program, 2019 through 2023." It should be 2018. That was a typo. The description explains it as 2018, but the heading was incorrect.
2018 through 2023, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any announcements or appeals?
Mr. Chair, we have received one appeal of a staff hearing officer decision at 1608 Bath Street for a modification, and that may be heard sometime in May at the appellate's request.
Thank you. Okay, now's the time, if anybody wants to speak to the commission on an item not on the agenda, feel free to approach the dais. Seeing none, close public comment. And we have two items on our agenda today, one consent item and one discussion item. Ms. Galarte, could you read the first item for us?
Mr. Chair, the first item is, "Planning Commission Findings of Consistency with the General Plan Pursuant to Government Code 65103 and 65401, and a recommendation to council to accept the draft six-year capital improvement program for 2018 through 2023."
Okay, so Ms. Galarte, it's my understanding, in consent items, we can waive the staff report?
That is correct.
Do you need a vote for that?
Yes.
So move.
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we can go right to questions then. Does anybody have any questions for staff on the additional staff report received or the CIP in general? Don't have any questions, any comments? Or anybody like to make a motion?
So I'll move that the planning commission find the draft six-year capital improvement program consistent with the general plan and recommend the council that they adopt such.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Ms. Galarte, when you're ready, you can read item four for us.
Mr. Chair, item four is a discussion item. It's the review and comment on the proposed infill design guidelines to be used by the Architectural Board of Review and the Historic Landmarks Commission, and the item will be presented by Mr. Tony Bowman.
Okay, Mr. Bowman, you can make your presentation when you're ready. I understand, though, for the benefit of the commission, we have specific questions to address in your staff report, and maybe after your presentation, you can put those up for us so we can have those handy.
Yes, sir. Okay, good afternoon, Chair Higgins and Commissioners. This is a discussion of the draft infill design guidelines for the ABR and the HLC. And the purpose of today's hearing is to receive planning commission comments that'll be forwarded to the ABR and the HLC on the guidelines. So while we sort of have two things going on today, one is the ABR and HLC guidelines in your exhibit three of the staff report. So the planning commission comments would go to the ABR and the HLC on those. And then we're asking for comments on, per city council direction, on what we've called the supplemental guidelines, and those are on page three in the body of the staff report. And those planning commission comments would be forwarded to the city council for consideration. So some background, as you know, the city's received many applications for particularly AUD projects. These guidelines were developed, drafted by the ABR and the HLC based on their experience in reviewing projects. They came up with a list of individual design guidelines to address particular concerns that they've come across in reviewing projects. And we felt there was a need for clear direction to applicants on design techniques to achieve compatibility. So in the ordinance, the ABR and HLC are supposed to consider a list of project compatibility considerations or criteria, and these guidelines would help applicants understand what those mean. Rather than just looking at a criteria that says be compatible in general terms, these specific, more specific project design techniques would help applicants understand how they can achieve compatibility. And then also, the ABR and the HLC would have these for their reference to apply as needed. So basically, so the applicants and the design review boards understand what it means for a project to be compatible. So the guidelines were developed first, the HLC formed their own subcommittee to start drafting guidelines. Those actually went to the full board of the, full commission of the HLC, and they made a recommendation on November 2nd of last year to council. But then when staff took that draft guidelines, or those HLC recommended guidelines, and began discussing them with the ABR, the guidelines got expanded quite a bit. The ABR had a lot of good input, and that's when it began to evolve in sort of a group of guidelines on topic areas, and then evolved further into being more of a menu of items that you can select from depending on the situation that you're facing. So staff met with, actually, the full ABR at two special meetings, December 9th and December 16th, to discuss them and draft them. And then after that, the ABR was pretty well satisfied with them, so then we went back, bouncing back over to the HLC subcommittee. We did that in January 25th and January 30th. And at that point, we had reached consensus, the ABR and HLC guidelines were the same at that point. Both bodies had agreed on the language that's attached to your staff report. Oh, and after that, after checking back over with the HLC, rather than meet with the ABR again, we felt everything was pretty well resolved. We just checked in with each ABR member via email, and they indicated they were okay, or we didn't hear from them. So those guidelines are what's in front of you today. So the real objective is to achieve, you know, what do you call it? Consistency with the project compatibility criteria in the ordinance. Those are required to be evaluated by the ABR and the HLC prior to a project design approval. And we talked a little bit already about how the guidelines relate to compatibility criteria. And for reference, we don't necessarily need to go through these. You are probably familiar with them, but we have them here for reference. Just general consistency with design guidelines, compatible with the character of the city and the neighborhood, appropriate size, bulk scale, sensitivity to adjacent historic resources, public views of oceans and mountains. We actually don't have any new guidelines related to that. None of those were drafted by the ABR or HLC. And then open space and landscaping. So these guidelines in exhibit three are proposed to be inserted. They're all new. We're not really replacing or editing existing guidelines. They're new guidelines to be inserted into these two existing documents. These are the general design guidelines of the HLC and the ABR. They've been around for quite a few years. And on your, in your staff report, I think it's on page two, describes how these would be merged into these documents. And I think after, depending on what we, the extent of comments we get today from the planning commission and the public, we would compile those edits or suggestions and then merge them into these documents so that the next time we go back to the HLC and the ABR, they would see how this actually looks when these guidelines are in these documents. And just the general organization, there's some new goals. At the front of both of those documents are a list of goals already, and these, we have four new goals to be inserted into there. It's like in the inside cover of the documents. We drafted a paragraph that kind of discusses the relationship between zoning ordinance standards and the project compatibility considerations to give, in particular, applicants a better understanding that, yes, they have to meet the zoning ordinance standards, including the AUD incentives that are offered for that program, but they also have to be found compatible. And these projects would require an approval by a design review board, the ABR and the HLC, so it's both. You have to meet the zoning ordinance, and you have to get the design review approval. And we've added, or the ABR and HLC created a definition of compatibility, because all this talk about compatibility, and there wasn't a good fleshed-out definition of what that means in this context, so that is something new to be added. And there's a paragraph about AUD in particular, kind of reiterating that the AUD offers incentives for these programs, but not all projects may fully utilize all the incentives of the AUD program and be found compatible with a neighborhood. It depends, and it's up to the designer view body to make that evaluation. And then again, the guidelines relating to the project compatibility considerations. So we've got, I'll go to the next slide. There's kind of four general groupings of design guidelines, and then there's six of the project compatibility considerations, and they don't necessarily align one for one. There is a project compatibility consideration on appropriate size, bulk, and scale. So the first group on building design height and massing kind of matches up with that. And also, site planning for open space and landscaping, that's directly related to a project compatibility criterion. Livability and privacy is different, though, and that's not even related to compatibility necessarily. That was added in the sense of, we're talking about multifamily projects, and there was a need for guidelines that addressed residential issues. You know, the Single Family Design Review Board was created in 2007, and they have very long, detailed guidelines. Many of them deal with privacy, and they have a section called Good Neighbor Guidelines, and they're Good Neighbor Tips. So there's a lot of guidelines addressing livability and privacy for single-family projects. So this kind of brings some of that into multifamily design guidelines. And then the historic resources, again, directly relates to a compatibility consideration to be compatible with adjacent historic resources. So this section on supplemental guidelines is that, that bit on page three of the staff report regarding floor plan configuration of larger units and possibly limiting the number of bathrooms for larger units. This is really to get to some of the floor plan configurations that we've seen on occasional projects where they look like they're intended to be used as boarding houses. And then a guideline about parking to consider maybe two parking spaces for units with three or more bedrooms. So as you mentioned, Chair Higgins, we did have the questions up here for you. So we've got them on individual slides. We've got the questions one, two, one through four. So we can kind of go through those in order now, if you'd like to.
Why don't you put them up on the screen so we can look at them, digest them, and then we can come back to them later, I think, after we hear from the public.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Oh, okay, go ahead and run through them then.
Okay.
If you'd like, right now, it's fine.
Okay. Do the guidelines adequately, adequately address the design concerns often expressed by members of the public and neighbors of proposed infill development projects? And that was, like we said, the ABR and HLC compiled the list of guidelines based on the concerns that they've faced and, you know, concerns they've heard from neighbors of projects and the public. So the kind of a big overall question that we'd like to put to the planning commission is, do the guidelines accomplish what we hope they would accomplish? We don't necessarily need the planning commission to do detailed, you know, critique of how they're worded. We've had a lot of review among ABR and HLC, a lot of wordsmithing. We've kind of got enough cooks in the kitchen, so to speak, on the individual wording and grammar of them, but just a broader overview of, do the guidelines accomplish what they need? Did we miss anything? Or are some of them off target, off base? So that's what we're looking for on that one. Do you want me to go through all those, or do you want to, go ahead and?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So then the second question, "Do the guidelines provide the needed tools to the ABR and HLC to ensure compatible projects while advancing the objectives of the AUD program?" And this really gets to that balance. You know, the city does desire more workforce housing, and we're trying to get more units in the city, and the program's been very successful in terms of receiving applications for these projects. But we hear from the public, they're very concerned about whether these larger projects are compatible in existing neighborhoods that might have a lot of older development. So here, we're really looking, does this provide that balance to accomplish both objectives at the same time? And question three, this gets back over to the supplemental guidelines on page three of the staff report, "Is the approach of having the ABR and HLC consider bathroom limitations, unit configuration, and potential to require additional parking, a reasonable application of design guidelines?" As we discussed in the staff report, staff has concerns about that in terms of, is it really designed? Generally, or historically, the ABR and HLC, they don't get involved with the interiors of projects. They're more concerned with the exterior aesthetics. And in the past, in some cases, we've had to kind of steer them away from those types of comments and just stick to compatibility and design. So we'd like to get the planning commission comments on that. And then three, three A is a follow-up question. If the planning commission thinks that these should be design guidelines, then do they adequately address the concerns? You know, if we take them as guidelines, are they adequate guidelines? Do they do the job? And then question four, that was another one from city council suggesting possibly planning commission review of AUD projects proposing five or more units. And then we don't want to constrain you necessarily to these specific questions. We're eager to hear anything else you have to say about this effort. So that, I think, concludes my presentation.
So, Mr. Bowman, how would you like us to organize our comments? Would you like each commissioner to just, when we get to commissioner comments or deliberations, one by one, answer those questions and make Ms. Rodriguez's life miserable while she types away?
Well, we would.
Or is there an outline you'd like us to follow, or what?
We would like to somehow end up with minutes of today's hearing that can be handed over or forwarded to the ABR and the HLC and the council, reflecting a majority of the planning commission.
So it'll be a little bit more of a free-for-all then, in terms of, when we get to each commissioner, each commissioner can address those specific questions individually then? Does that sound good, everybody?
Right. Well, we would do question by question, but try to get a majority consensus of.
Okay, so we'll go question by question. Each commissioner answers each question, one question at a time, I'm sorry, and then we'll go to the next question.
Right.
That sounds good.
Oh, I did forget. We do have a little bit more on next steps after today's hearing. We talked about forwarding comments, and we'll go back to meet with the full ABR. In fact, we've got that meeting pending for next Tuesday. It'll be a special meeting of the ABR just for this purpose, next Tuesday at noon, and the HLC Subcommittee of four HLC members, also next Tuesday at 1:30, to pass along what we hear today. And then back to the ABR on, we're planning on February 27th, the next full board meeting of the ABR, where they would formally make a recommendation that council adopt the guidelines. And same thing for the HLC, we think that'll be on March 8th. And then planning commission on April 11th. So that's the plan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bowman, can you repeat that last? It does come back to the planning commission before going to city council?
No. Oh, I might have misspoke. City council on April 11th.
So this is our, our shot at it then?
That's right.
So my question on process is, to what degree do we get your opinion on, or see some analysis on whether or not this, these guidelines conflict with anything else in the general plan or housing element? Or is the assumption that they don't right now?
The assumption is that they don't.
So we don't, we may not see any more analysis in that regard, but the council might, or I guess maybe if we make those comments, you'll go back and look at that?
Chair Higgins, we did receive your questions regarding that very fact, and we did try to relay, our position is that we are actually complying with some of the implementation actions that were called for with respect to try to have this balance of compatibility, and especially in our historic resources element. There was a specific direction to pursue this issue with how to get compatible development adjacent to historic resources.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a process question. There's a lot here before us today, Mr. Bowman and Limon, so I would appreciate having a better understanding of how the planning commission's feedback from today would be incorporated into or considered, along with the, or as part of, the newly constituted housing task force work effort.
Yeah, I think I can relate that. What I, I did have some concerns about the parking aspect with these supplemental regulations, and I was advised by Mr. Gullett that they intend to speak about that issue with that, with that task force. So they may be able to continue those discussions with respect to parking. Today's discussion would be, do you agree that there's a role for the designer view bodies to weigh in on that aspect? As you, as you read our staff report, our opinion is that if you're talking about parking, it really should be best left to an ordinance as a way to achieve the parking requirements for these larger units. But you may have a different take on it, and you could also convey those sentiments, and we'll pass them along to not only our review bodies, but city council eventually, who would make that decision.
So it sounds like, then, we need to be cognizant of those other efforts outside of this meeting today with respect to housing regulation, subcommittee, AUD ordinance revisions, et cetera, that may have a better, maybe better equipped to handle some of what is being presented here.
With respect to the supplemental questions, but the guidelines are moving forward, and what we would like to have is to not set back the process and get into a lot of questions about how each guideline should be drafted and rewritten. And so that's why we're suggesting that, look, overall, are the issues being addressed? Any suggestions to make improvements are welcome, but it's a very difficult dynamic to get two review boards to agree on language. And so we don't, we, where our interest is to make sure if it's a major missing element, sure, we'd like to address it, and if there's some specific guidance that you could offer, you're welcome to take that, but we're not guaranteeing you that all of your suggested edits will be acceptable to our review boards.
Okay, so I'll be careful myself to not, and I'll encourage my other fellow commission members, not to, to keep that in mind that there are other housing initiatives happening and to not potentially send a conflicting message herein today on items that are going to be handled elsewhere. So that's just my immediate color commentary. Let's just take real quick questions of staff and then go to public comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Higgins. I think that's an important comment because in considering the two major questions, there are some items, majority of items are guidelines, which I, staff, is not an absolute. Is that, is that correct? That's a recommendation on how to design and present? When you say guideline, is it an absolute or a recommendation by the design boards?
Well, they're, each heading, each section of guidelines, like building height, design massing, they're more intent, there's an introductory statement preceding each group of guidelines that kind of explains how they can be selected. They're sort of situational. Each project's different, and each project might be facing particular challenges. One might be building height problem. It's difficult to find it compatible because of height. So there's guidelines, how to reduce the height. Just, that's one example. So they're used as needed.
Okay. So it depends on the particular site. I just want to distinguish that from some other items we're asked to opine on, which are absolutes. When you get to bathrooms and cars and things like that, rather than guidelines, they appear to be absolute recommendations one way or the other. So I just wanted to make that distinction. Thank you.
Okay, we can go to public comment now, and I have a stack of speaker slips here, but before we do that, is there anybody in the audience that's here representing in a semi-official capacity comments of the HLC or ABR? Because I see some design reviewers out there, and so these are independent design reviewers, not on behalf of, okay. So we can go to public comment, and you'll have two minutes each, and we can start with Lindsay Baker, to be followed by Mr. Pujol.
Co-president of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is pleased that these infill guidelines are being developed. They should provide clarity and direction to help the HLC and the ABR make decisions. The emphasis on compatibility is important. The League supported the AUD program in its final compromise version, but we were not anticipating the great number of larger-than-usual buildings that have been proposed or already under construction. So the review boards have a heavy responsibility to make them fit into their surroundings. These guidelines should help. The supplemental guidelines for AUD projects are appropriate. AUD is an experiment, and experiments can often benefit from adjustments. We note that limiting the number of bathrooms will contribute to keeping costs to the builder down. That in turn helps keep the rental price down. Also, the change in parking requirements recognizes the reality of the neighborhoods where many of these AUD projects are cited. Thank you for your consideration of our comments.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Alex Pujol, to be followed by Lisa Plowman.
This has been an AUD week. I think we have Monday, I think, Tuesday, City Hall with the story polls, and yesterday, the task force, and today, I'd like to say that my printer is running out of ink, which means that regulations are growing. And regarding the guidelines, one specific, on page number seven, nine, align eaves, cornices, and ridge lines consistent with those of the neighboring historic structures, it should be compatible. If you want to be consistent with your guidelines, you know, your guidelines talk about compatibility. Consistent means the same height, and if you want to increase density in areas, you cannot keep the same eave line. It should be compatible. It may not be exactly the same. So that's an important thing regarding your questions.
Sorry, Mr. Pujol, could you slow down? Just tell us specifically again where the languages that you're.
Number nine on page seven. Item, align eaves, cornices, and ridge lines consistent. Consistent means the same. So how can you have a bigger building if you have to be the same as the, shorter building next door? You should be respectful and so forth, but not, I think the term is compatible. Regarding your questions, you know, I sat in many of these boards, I think I spent 16 years combined with ABR and landmarks, and I never review, I always close my eyes regarding the interior of the structures, I mean, the bathrooms, no, I don't think, I don't think it's the purpose of the design review body to review the number of bathrooms inside the building. And regarding parking, parking is one of the main elements of the HUD program. There are a few things that work. It's the fact that they avoid planning commission, the fact that they have less parking, and the fact that they have less parking, and, and, well, basically, those are the two elements. You start touching those, and then the whole, you're killing the goose that lays the golden egg. So I think that some of those, of the four questions, I believe one is fine, two is probably fine, and I think this idea about parking and so forth is really out of the purview. Number four is talking about four, five or more units. I mean, how about a little bit more units? I mean, it starts, it basically starts tweaking with one of those main elements of the AUD program. I think you have some other venues that are working on this, so perhaps the design guidelines are not the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Plowman, to be followed by Dede Piker.
I'm actually just going to submit this letter on behalf of Coastal Housing Coalition, and I'm going to cede my time to Dede Piker.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Mr. Piker, you would like four minutes?
Yes.
Give you three and 50 seconds.
Yeah, I've obviously been, taken a, very much an interest in all the things that have been going on over the past couple of weeks with the AUD and what's to follow. You know, as an architect, and particularly, I'm interested in the design guidelines, and I think it's already been stated, but, you know, the design guidelines should not really be trying to amend the ordinance or modify it. References to parking, bedroom count, bathroom count should be eliminated from the design guidelines and addressed by the Housing Task Force in an amendment to the ordinance, if that's deemed appropriate and necessary. I think the other thing I was concerned about was the proposal to require that projects of five units or more be brought to the Planning Commission. I know, of course, the Planning Commission is interested in all the projects that are moving through the city, but I think the whole purpose of the AUD and the incentive program to get the kind of priority housing that is needed was meant to sort of move those projects through more efficiently and quickly, and adding that burden to, you know, projects of five units or more just seems to be contrary to that concept, and I think unnecessary, especially for these smaller projects. And it just adds another, you know, couple of months of processing to moving those projects through. But I wanted to touch on another important aspect of the process, and I think Mr. Pujol just touched on that, and that's the meaning of words, you know, which words are used to describe what requirements or guidelines are being proposed. And in particular, I want to touch on the word, the difference between the word consistent and compatible. Compatible is a word that allows for buildings to exist together in harmony, and it's a much more kind of broad understanding of what that means. If you use the word consistent in a number of these places, which I like to just hand this out, and I'll go over our suggested, my suggested edits to some of the language where the word consistent is being used. Consistent means including free from variation or contradiction. It's a very different meaning, and it means really that something that's consistent is essentially the same as, and it really kind of undermines the purpose of the general plan and the zoning ordinances which allow for certain densities of development in neighborhoods, recognizing that they're not going to be the same as what they may be currently. So I think it's important to really perhaps provide additional information about the meaning of the word compatible, and how that is used to allow development in, you know, various contexts. So I just think that's important. So I can go through those pretty quickly. When it comes to building height, design, mass, I'm sorry, I'm going to go to the sheet that I've handed out to you here, building height, design, and massing. Again, there's the word consistent, which would mean same as, as compared to compatible, which means in harmony with. So the same thing in point, in number five of building height and massing, in order to, for the project to be compatible with the surrounding buildings is what we propose as being the language that's used there. In site planning, open space and landscaping, I would take the word significant out and just provide landscaping entries at the ground level, particularly in areas that screen and soften larger masses of buildings. Significant is just open to really broad interpretation as opposed to what's required by ordinance. Projects adjacent to historic structures, again, I think Mr. Pujol pointed that out very well and explained it, the word compatible should be used in place of consistent because of the difference in the meanings of those words. Foundation heights and floor-to-ceiling heights should be sensitive to adjacent historic structures as opposed to, you know, being the same as, et cetera. And then again, point number nine under, projects adjacent to historic structures should be compatible and not necessarily consistent with in the meanings of those words. So those are a couple of things, and hopefully you'll take a look at that language and possibly utilize it as you make your recommendations back to the design review commissions and ultimately the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Newhauser, to be followed by Ellen Biltston.
Hi, I'm Christine Newhauser. I live on the east side. I'm happy the infill design guidelines are coming about, but I have some concerns to, or other areas, part of it, to emphasize that the design compatibility for the existing neighborhood, as in Santa Barbara City Charter remains, that there's more parking required for three-bedroom units, that there's adequate green space and outdoor living space, as is in the plan for the AUD projects, to be near parks, et cetera, but where are they? AUD unit floor plan configurations not allow for dormitory-type units, that the Planning Commission should review and approve the larger AUD projects to devote more time for public hearings and notifications, expanded notifications of neighborhoods and design placards that they talked about the other day, or story pole installations. I think problematic is the zoning ordinance, it's on exhibit three. Problematic is the zoning ordinance allowing larger developments that can be the catalyst to develop other larger buildings in the neighborhood of purported underdeveloped neighborhoods. So the thing is, is this definition simply because they are a majority of lower density and lower building heights? So require the building heights be within the range of the heights of the buildings generally seen in the neighborhood, not just the new development that's across the street or a tower that's considered a third story. Design massing so as not to block public views of historic resources from multiple vantage points. And in close, these are real concerns from neighborhood residents. Is there a community plan for Milpus-Haley-Cota Street where so much of this new building is happening? What design guidelines apply if the ABR believes that Haley-Milpus-Cota is outdated and not being used? Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Biltston, to be followed by our last speaker that has given us a speaker slip, Jan Hochhauser.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am representative of the AIA, the American Institute of Architects, the advocacy group that has a committee with that group this year. As a group, we went through the draft guidelines that Tony and Jaime had brought our attention to, and we had a meeting with them to run through the various paragraphs of these guidelines. We came up with a detailed compilation of our comments from numerous AIA members, and those are going to be available to you with specific suggestions on the wording. In many cases, we thought there are statements about that elements should occur, or that they should be the case in the way that the design guidelines are being approached, and we strongly encourage that those are things that could be considered as opposed to making them stronger in the way that they're being stated. There's some very specific items that were mentioned by a few of my colleagues earlier about consistency and sameness between projects moving forward relative to existing structures, and we think those are far too prescriptive, and compatibility with existing fabric is a sufficient sign for us to take for how we move forward. Another area of concern is, concerns site planning for open space. It's one of the key tenets of AUD, that the common open space not be required to be at grade, but that it's okay for it to be on an upper level. And a lot of the wording in the paragraphs that relate to the site planning would suggest that those common open areas would go back to being at the ground plane, which makes providing adequate parking nearly impossible to achieve for these higher-density projects. We will provide these documents to you for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. Jan Hochhauser is our final speaker.
Question.
Go ahead.
I was unclear from Ms. Biltston, is, did you submit your comments to staff, were they're coming to staff? Okay, can we get a copy here as well and distribute it when it's available?
Good afternoon, Jan Hochhauser. I could be brief. I kind of underscore and support the comments of Dede and Alex, but my main purpose of speaking is to kind of advocate for commission involvement, and there's some discussion going on about at what level, at what threshold does the Planning Commission get involved in review of these AUD projects? If we take Dede's comment about minimizing and streamlining the review process so that five units in smaller projects don't require Planning Commission review, that does streamline the process. But when the Planning Commission's involved, I advocate that you guys have teeth, that it's not just a cursory recommendation review. I've experienced this firsthand, where several reviews by the Planning Commission are more or less ignored or not taken seriously by HLC. So I'm a strong advocate of when the time is taken, and when Planning Commission time is taken, when the applicant's time is taken, to present a project to the Planning Commission, that their involvement and their commentary is taken seriously as part of the requirements for the next reviewing body. As you know, the 800 Santa Barbara Street project was just a cursory review by the Planning Commission. We had several, it was frustrating to some members of the Planning Commission, a lot of time was spent, staff report, staff time, but more or less that, all that work was more or less ignored at HLC. So when, I'm advocating for Planning Commission involvement that has standing in the review process. And just to further that, because I think the Planning Commission is a body that has a much broader perspective on accomplishing the goals and policies that the city is after. And the review, the purview of some of the review agencies is rather narrow, and a broad-scope perspective would be appreciated when all the time and effort is taken. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hochhauser. Okay, so we're going to close public comment at this time and give staff a chance to respond to any of the comments made by the members of the public, if you'd like, Tony?
Well, staff, we'll definitely consider their comments and take those forward to the ABR.
Anything now you'd like to respond to?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we can go right to Commissioner comments. If any of the commission members have, I'm sorry, questions of staff, now's the time. So Commissioner Jordan. Doesn't have, let's go to Commissioner Schwartz for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know you don't want to get into wordsmithing, but I have a question about how this, these guidelines are even being framed as infill, and I ask only because in the staff report on the very first page, it does clarify that we're not just talking about infill guidelines. It also references new development on vacant sites. So is there a reason why staff is labeling this as infill design guidelines? Can you just give me your thoughts, Mr. Bowman?
Well, I mean, a project could be a large commercial building, or a large mixed-use building that's not necessarily under the AUD program and have, be struggling with the same sorts of compatibility concerns. So we didn't want to necessarily limit it to projects developed under the AUD program specifically.
Okay, I'll come back to that as a comment. Now, throughout our documents today, there are references to a series of terms, but we don't have the same set of terms consistently used, not compatibilities, but consistently used throughout the documents. So for example, on one page, it says size, bulk, scale. Further in, it adds language to that and includes height. Further on, on a different page, it would include some other language. So I would just, I can either pose it as a question or just ask staff to go back and talk to the review boards, especially ABR. So excuse me, Mr. Chair, I know this is kind of sliding into a comment or a suggestion. And the reason I'm getting to this is Fred Sweeney has come to the Planning Commission on a number of occasions to talk to us about the tendency, in his opinion, and I know that's SFB, but nonetheless, as an architect and as a review board member and as chair, that sometimes these words get run together as though they're somehow all linked and they're one means of considering, one form of a guideline or a standard for review consideration, design review consideration. But in fact, as Mr. Sweeney has explained to the Planning Commission, and to me personally, each one of these words has its own meaning, has its own definition from an architectural review vantage point. So I know you don't want to spend a lot of time today, and since I'm not an architect, but I have colleagues and friends who are, I would think it's very important to take this back to the review boards and really spend some time, because number one, they are lumped all together on a number of these pages, and they're inconsistently referenced. So you have a total of five, I'll just ask you to make a note, on one page, the maximum number of these terms you have is five, all run together, and it's at the very back of the document it's on, it's exhibit four. Size, mass, bulk, height, scale. That's five terms. But then throughout our documents, sometimes you have four words, in other cases, you have three of these words, and I just don't understand, and I'm not going to obviously need to spend the time, trying to figure out if you mean different things, or if the ABR and HLC mean different things when you don't use all five, and even if you use all five, what do they discreetly mean in terms of making findings? So if I could ask you that. Now, let me keep going then. I wanted to find out if we have a working definition or a legal definition for the word neighborhood, and to me, this is, this is very important, because when we look at making compatibility findings, a clear and consistent definition, and one that's defensible legally also, needs to be considered in terms of deciding whether or not development application meets the findings relative to neighborhood compatibility. So do we have, do we have that? Am I overlooking maybe a document or some reference in a document that we have that describes neighborhood?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Schwartz, the largest definition I believe we have for neighborhood is in the general plan, where we do have 20 some-odd neighborhoods. That's, that's larger than what we mean in this context, where we actually refer to the immediate neighborhood, and then there are some tools we use now for design boards where we look at either the 10 or the 20 closest lots. So it does depend on the size and scale of the project, but we are trying to be more specific here in, in the definition of compatibility, that we use the reference to immediate neighborhood.
Okay, so here's another example where I would ask Mr. Limone that you and the team go back and talk in great detail, well, among yourselves clearly, but, so that we, we're all working with the same definition, whatever that is, and I don't get the sense from our documents here that actually we are today, and from listening to review board hearings as I have, I, I think it's a little too wide, wide open. Then if I could also ask you about, so on page two of the staff report, in the, I guess it's the second paragraph, the paragraph starts, "The ABR and HLC have mutually exclusive review," and then it goes on from there. The second to the last sentence, "Projects would be reviewed against the most applicable guidelines and not necessarily be expected to meet every guideline." So my question to staff here is, who decides which are, quote, "most applicable," and how do we have, how do we have a standard for deciding that? Because here again, I think it's far from being consistent among our review board members, and I've heard that back from applicants. So how are we looking? So how are we looking to clarify and kind of solidify a process that's more, more clear and consistent for applicants?
Commissioner Schwartz, I can answer that. I think when you understand the evolving manner in which these guidelines were developed.
Yes.
It transitioned from having guidelines that gave a reason to deny a project. I mean, that's how they were started. And when we revisited these types of guidelines with the ABR, we recognized that it was more appropriate to give techniques and approaches as solutions to problems associated with the designs. So we actually revised the guidelines and turned it more, again, like Mr. Bowman says, to a menu approach. So it is going to be a subjective decision on the part of design review boards to see which ones have been applied by the architect. We're going to try to emphasize architects to propose their, make their case for compatibility, rather than have the, the boards be the lead persons to try to mold a project. So I think that's the advantage, when you get some type of guidelines in place, we have the advantage of architects referring to the guidelines as what they followed, what they chose to follow as a means to achieve their compatibility design, in the design. We're also complementing these guidelines with additional submittal requirements, and I think Ms. Schwartz was aware of some of the earlier discussions with multifamily design guidelines.
Yes.
You actually supported the idea of enhancing the context discussion with the boards, will be having some, some additional data provided to them within the neighborhood of how these, this building relates to other buildings with.
Great.
With height, stories, and possible FAR numbers. And in addition, we're also going to ask for a design intent statement, which essentially what they do when they introduce a project. Why did they design this project in the manner they did? And also point to guidelines that have been followed. And we think that's a more positive approach for architects to pursue as they design a building, and be able to explain why the building was designed in its manner, how it was presented.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Limone. My next question is on page three. The term household, again, is kind of jumping out at me. I did a quick search across a variety of public agencies, private organizations, the federal government, and household, even the IRS, it seems to be defined differently. So I would appreciate knowing how, again, perhaps there's a document I'm unaware of in the city or a reference, but specifically to how you're looking to use the term household here. And again, it's on page three, but it's, there are a number of references to the word household. So when we look at design adjustments, so this is on page three, under AUD program incentives. Number one has, well, has a long second sentence, but part of it is, "Now, ABR, HLC may request design adjustments to address the ratio of bedrooms to bathrooms, total number of bathrooms," it goes on from here, "to facilitate occupancy by a single household instead of a number of individuals and multiple households."
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll jump in at this point. The, the term household is, is kind of the, the modern replacement for the, the term family. The city of Santa Barbara was kind of the poster child when we attempted to apply single-family zoning to a residence that was shared by a number of unrelated individuals. They argued that, that they were, there was an enforcement action against them applying, saying that they were not, because they were unrelated, they were not appropriately using the, a single-family home. They argued on the contrary, saying, yes, we're not, we're not related, however, we are functioning in the same way as a, as a family who might be residing in this, in the same residence. Our use is the same as a single-family residence. When we're talking about a household, one of the presumptions of the AUD is that each one of these residential units is occupied by a household, as opposed to a group of unrelated and, and disparate individuals. It is presumed, because the, that's, one of the, that presumption is what enabled the city council to view a single parking space as being a, an appropriate amount of parking for that residential unit. It was presumed in, in their discussions that a single household would have a certain number of vehicles and require a certain number of vehicles, a vehicle, in order to meet their transportation needs. It was, that is different than an assumption or a circumstance where you have the same number of individuals, however, they lead independent lives. Those independent lives don't function in the same way as a household of individuals. The term family is charged and it, and it brings in privacy issues relating to how that family unit is constructed and so forth. That's why the term household is being used as opposed to family.
Okay, I'll mull that over. Then staff, I, I was interested to hear a little bit more from you also on page three. At the bottom of this page, there are two sentences here where staff expresses and wants us to understand that you have concerns in a number of areas about some of the guidelines put forward, because you're saying they don't provide, and your term is regulatory certainty. So, I don't know if you, for example, staff has concerns about regulating the number of bathrooms, interior unit configurations, and the number of required parking spaces in desired guidelines. Then you go on to another sentence. Staff also has concerns that the types of guidelines that may require a maximum limit on the number of bathrooms or may require additional parking spaces are problematic since they do not provide regulatory certainty. So is it all about regulatory certainty, or can you, do you have additional thoughts for us to consider in terms of understanding your, your collective concerns? Because I think these are important, I appreciate you putting these in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Schwartz. I was going to preface your deliberation on question three or four when we get to that, but I can state it here now with respect to, the question posed to you about the appropriateness of design guidelines addressing the number of bathrooms, bedrooms, unit configuration in these units. As the staff report says, we do have concerns. We don't believe that design guidelines are the appropriate tool to do that. We were directed by city council to bring that to you for your consideration. And granted, the work on the infill design guidelines was well underway when council directed us to bring that to you for your consideration. They were aware that these guidelines were pending on your agenda at the time and felt that this might be inappropriate venue to have that discussion. That doesn't mean that those aren't issues that should be addressed, because we do believe there, in, in some ways, these are concerns that are brought up. How units are configured, how many bedrooms, the bedroom to parking ratio, we've all, we've heard that, and we understand the Housing Task Force will be looking at that. However, just in the context of design guidelines, we do have concerns about that being the appropriate means to regulate that. And as we say in the staff report, those appear to be better regulated as actual amendments to the ordinance.
Yeah, you state that too in there, that's helpful to know. Lastly, and thank you, Mr. Chair, lastly, I was just wondering from some of the comments made by members of the public, I would like to hear from staff. For example, Mr. Piker's handout to us, and again, Mr. Pujo mentioned this also, changing from the word consistent to compatible, which is not just a simple word change, but it really has some other implications by sort of nuanced definition. Did you have a comment for us on his handout?
Commissioner Schwartz, we, what we have done is we've actually reached out to the AIA and actually had good conversations that, similar concerns about that word. And so our intention is to go back and revisit that, because we've heard it multiple times. And I think that the boards would be open to that. I think that the, what I heard from the HLC members specifically is that they will accept something that's slightly larger than what's there. In other words, that, that it doesn't have to be consistent. There, there could be some ability to expand beyond what's there, given the proximity of other larger buildings. So there's not as much concern there. The, the dynamic with the ABR is a little bit more difficult, because we've had discussions with them about the first building on the block, and what does that mean? And so that's, that came up with the discussion on story posts also, like what is in close proximity that we can compare this building with other buildings? And I believe they would be also open up to that change, word change.
And then Ms. Bilstein mentioned that she thinks, and perhaps on behalf of the AIA, that the word should is, is a little too prescriptive, perhaps may or could, and I'm, you know, I'll let you do the, the global word search here in all these documents. What do you think about that feedback from the AIA regarding that, the word being too prescriptive for the purposes of what we're looking to accomplish?
I, I think, again, if you look at the introductory language to all of these sections, it, it starts off with that they may be utilized. And so there's a caveat with respect to each guideline. So one shouldn't read too much into that should or may issue. It's, it's qualified as you introduce the item. The following may be utilized. So it is still subject to some selection. So I don't think you're going to have the, the boards interpret that, that should as being, this guideline has to be accomplished. It's, it's, it's a guideline offered to accomplish the goal, so you can select any one within that group that, or a combination of both to, to achieve that goal.
Okay, I think those are my questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Let's go to Commissioner Lodge, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the meeting on, I believe it was December 13th, where the city council established the task force on AUD, there was discussion of parking issues and of the, possibly a two-bed bath per unit limit to reduce the, the size and cost of the units, which are the original intent, the original goal was that it be workforce and more affordable than what we were, than what was currently available. I was really surprised to see that the, the parking issue did come to the task force yesterday, but I was really surprised to see the bathroom issue in with the guidelines. It seems to, to me that it should be, it seems to me it would be a simple ordinance amendment to have that limitation. And I haven't been able to find any reason why any one of these units would need more than to, unless they are attempting to turn it into student housing, which has been the case with some of the projects that have come before, ABR and HLC. How did the, how did the bedroom, I'm sorry, how did the bathroom count end up over in the guidelines?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lodge, as you recalled correctly, on December 13th, when council formed the Housing Task Force, there were four objectives of that task force that council asked the task force to carry out over a six-month period. One of those was to investigate adjusting the parking requirements based on several things, based on the location and desired outcomes of the projects. Looking at the parking, the parking requirements with relation to unit size, bedroom count, considering parking in lieu fees, so that was all in the mix of what the, the task force should consider in turn, when they look at parking ratios. After the council formed the task force on December 13th, there were a number of other motions made by city council, and that is where they directed staff to bring this question of should the number of bathrooms be limited to the Planning Commission, because they knew that you were seeing these guidelines. It was not a perfect solution, and I believe we mentioned at that meeting that really that, that does seem to be more of an ordinance amendment, but council wanted to have it explored by Planning Commission. So what we've done in the staff report is our best attempt for how such a guideline might be worded if Planning Commission and ultimately ABR, HLC, and council decide that bathrooms or internal unit configuration should be an element of design guidelines.
Okay, so it sounds as if we need to have a discretion as the Planning Commission of, you know, do, should the number of bathrooms be limited?
Correct, and that's, I believe, a later question that, that we'll get to as a group to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Whiskin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question, well, I have two, several questions, but my first one relates to what Commissioner Lodge just said. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the commission reached the conclusion that yes, the number of bathrooms should be limited to two and should be put in the design guidelines, these are infill design guidelines, and until the task force, the Housing Task Force actually comes back and makes a formal recommendation after they've, you know, done all their work, wouldn't these guidelines help just with that time gap between the two, and then we could implement, you know, if we chose to implement what, city council could implement, what the Housing Task Force recommends? Are you following my question?
I think partially, but maybe if you don't mind framing it again.
Wouldn't, if, if we had a two-bathroom limit in, in these guidelines, wouldn't that be kind of a placeholder for something that's being discussed on these projects at the Housing Task Force level?
Understood. Okay, thank you. The challenge here is that these are guidelines. So the intent, as, as Tony and I may have mentioned, of these guidelines is to help round out the review by ABR and HLC of these larger projects when they're considering their compatibility criteria. So there's layers here. We're trying to provide them additional tools so that when they consider these six compatibility criteria, what does it mean when we say a project needs to have adequate open space, or does it have, is it, is the height, bulk, mass, mass and scale appropriate? So these are guidelines to help the board members make compatibility criteria. I don't know, and I would defer to Mr. Vincent in terms of their ability to dictate maximums or minimums that is, is more appropriately addressed in an ordinance. An ordinance is very black and white. You must have, you cannot exceed. Guidelines, just by their very nature, are more suggestive and subjective.
But you can discourage.
You can discourage.
Yes, in guidelines, you can discourage or encourage.
That's true.
And then that's not ordinance material necessarily. So that's, I guess that's where I'm getting to, the placeholder could be there with that kind of language. You know, encourage the applicant to consider limiting the number of bathrooms or increasing the number of parking spaces. So, okay. And then my next question is, on item number two, this is on the same page, on page three of the staff report, require that projects of five or more units be sent to Planning Commission for comments. I was just curious about that, because you state that item number two could be considered independently by and at the discretion of the ABR or HLC at any time, but is not typically an element of design guidelines. But the procedures are elements of design guidelines. They're, at least they're in the design guidelines. So is there any reason why if the Planning Commission chose to, since you're asking us, that is one of the, one of the questions? Does the Planning Commission wish to review and provide comments on AUD projects proposing five or more units? Is there any reason why that couldn't be in there?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Whiskom, there's a couple of ways that that could be accomplished, and I think you mentioned the question specifically that we're asking the Planning Commission, does the Planning Commission wish to review projects of five units or more? Because we can accomplish that in a couple of ways. The guidelines may not, again, be the most appropriate place to do that. It could be that if that recommendation is carried forward to city council, they could, as a policy of council, mandate that the ABR and HLC refer projects of five units or more to the Planning Commission. They have that ability now. There's a provision in each of their code sections that allows them to refer projects to the Planning Commission for projects that are in a highly public. to the Planning Commission for projects that are in a highly public area, I believe it used that. Council could, could say, we deem any project of five units or more to qualify, and thus you must refer these projects to Planning Commission. So again, design guidelines may not be the most appropriate tool to accomplish that, but the question to you is, do you wish to have these projects referred to?
So that's part of the reason why staff didn't really address that, because you're really asking the question of the, okay, I just wasn't clear on that. Okay, and then I'm, I'm going to turn, I, I do have some comments, but I'm going to turn one of my comments into a question and not to really put you on the spot, but the, you use the term in the guidelines and you define the term compatibility, but you also talk about livability and that, you know, having a design background, I was kind of taken aback by that word. So I actually went and, you know, looked it up, and, you know, it can mean, it means habitable, it can mean comfortable, or comfortably habitable, but it can also mean just habitable. So I guess I would ask you if you've had any discussions with both design review boards on the word livability, and if you have not, that you, because you use it right in the front, to, it's really one of the goals, to encourage the livability of projects and safety of residents. And so have you had, I can understand the gargantuan task that you had dealing with two different design review boards and putting this together, and you've done a great job, but did you have any discussion about that? And if you did, I would make a recommendation that maybe you use high standards of livability rather than livability that could be mediocre.
Commissioner Whiskom, we, we didn't really kick around that word, livability. I like your suggestion about clarifying it not just to high standards of livability or something along those lines, but we really didn't discuss that. That was kind of a catch-all term to kind of introduce residential considerations into these guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, it's a design term, and I can, I understand the concept, but it did kind of not, it wasn't strong enough for me, I think, you know, that, and I'm just seeing if I have any more. I think that's pretty much, the rest of mine are all comments and no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Campanella, you've got your light on. Do you want to go again with questions? Or any more questions?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Vincent?
I'm sorry, yes.
You do, okay, go ahead.
Sorry about that. If I can get back to Mr. DeVincent's comment about households and families, and honestly, it's the first time I've heard about the intent of AUD parking being related to something more than just the number of people that may, or bedrooms that may be in a unit, but the type of people that are in a unit. I don't recall, and maybe that was early on, but I don't recall that being a discussion of what determines how many cars. I thought that was more where these projects are located, proximity to facilities and walking and et cetera, and the areas of town that were selected for the, especially the higher density, was in keeping with that. So I don't understand, because there's couples who aren't married, there are two-bedroom units where two people are splitting the rent to get the cost down, but that would not come under definition, under these guidelines? I'm confused.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would, I would further explain my comments as in the juxtaposition between a household, people who are living together, who are sharing a life together, they're, the case law talks about, related or unrelated, doesn't matter, but that they share household duties. They, they shop, they cook together, they live a communal life. That's a household. The, when, what I've observed in this conversation about the number of bathrooms and the orientation of bathrooms versus bedrooms has been in the context of a juxtaposition of the concern that a number of persons who are not living that communal household manner, in that household manner, are going to be, that they somehow present a greater problem or a greater potential that they're going to require more vehicles, that those, that those projects that are presenting that kind of living scenario are under, are further underparked, that are exacerbating the parking issue more than a unit that is being occupied by a household. That's what I've observed in the conversation that has been going on for the last year to year and a half about AUD projects, and that, and so that's the nature, as far as the juxtaposition between household and dorm room, is that some people are calling those kinds of configurations.
Okay, well, it'd be interesting if you, you know, if you don't mind, when we get back to the task force meetings, maybe we, when we're looking at parking and other issues, that maybe we can bring that up again. I appreciate that and appreciate your input. Okay, a question for staff. We have three different levels of density. This is infill design guidelines, but let me go to AUD for a moment. We all know we have three different levels of density. We have medium, high, which is in primarily R3, R4 zones. And that, well, not technically FAR, let's say, but it, there's a maximum on how many square feet of living area there could be, and that equates to about half the size of the lot, about 50% of lots. So if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, you can only build 5,000 square feet, maybe six, 5,000 to 6,000 square feet under roof livable, depending on what density you take. The high is about 35,000 square feet compared to an acre, that's about 80%. And then you're about 1.1% on priority. So your priority is twice as many, twice as much living square feet on a site, depending on the area that you're in. But we're looking at compatibility and guidelines the same, no matter what zone it's in, okay? So in order to accomplish getting towards the higher density in the zones that allow it, the actual under-roof massing is going to have to be larger. So you can be in the CM zone on Haley and Cota with a parking lot, you know, an old single-story structure, a variety of things in an area that doesn't have current design guidelines, yet you have to come up with compatibility in that area. To me, it's, it's different than building two or three stories within R3, R4, where next to you may be multiple buildings on the lot, but they're still not that high. And I think the R3, R4, medium, high, if we go back to the housing element, was specifically limited on square footage in order to at least be the same as, if not less than, what was available to be built under variable density. So my question, should we be looking at compatibility under the AUD differently in zones that are not multifamily but are strictly commercial, relative to what currently exists or being the first one on the block in those zones? That's my question.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campanella, that's a good question, and I think it relates to an earlier question about neighborhood, and also knowing that although our city, land within our city has a certain zoning designation, it doesn't mean it's built out to that, or it's currently built out or would propose to be built out to that. So the guidelines are, again, applicable to all types of infill development. It's, could be multi-unit residential, it could be commercial, it could be mixed use. And so we specifically not limited these to AUD because the terms and guidelines in here are appropriate for all types of development. I think there could be, we could be overly limiting ourselves if we tried to designate certain guidelines appropriate only for certain zones or more appropriate in certain zones because we don't know exactly how in any situation the surrounding lots might be developed, even though they might be in a CM zone or they might be in R3, R4 zone. As you know, there's a lot of underdeveloped properties, and there's some non-conforming properties in some of these zones. And so when we're looking at infill development, we want to take into consider, in consideration what's around, but also recognition that that adjacent lot could be redeveloped. Right now, there might be a small bungalow on that lot, but yes, it has C2 zoning, and should we not consider what might be built next to it? And I believe there is some guideline language in there about that. Consider how close you are building out to the property lines and where you're putting your private outdoor living space, because right now you might have light and air on that balcony, but 10 years from now, you may not. So those types of challenges are there, I believe, regardless of the zone district, just the way that Santa Barbara has built out over the years with some, as I said, some properties in the R3, R4 zones, non-conforming to setbacks, non-conforming to density, and then many underdeveloped properties in the commercial and manufacturing zones.
No, I agree with you 100% on looking at what's there or can be there relative to setbacks, orientation, balconies, and I think the design boards do an excellent job on planning for that, looking at what's around and what could be around. My primary question comes on compatibility relative to size, bulk and scale. If you're in a zone that allows it, but just things are not built next to you yet, given all the considerations of setbacks and what may be built next door, why can't there be a little more flexibility on compatibility versus having to look within a block or half a block to see if you're currently higher than, or you're under the AUD, you're complying, but being the first one on the block, why is that such a constraint? Because somebody's got to go first if we're going to redevelop properties.
I'd like to comment on that, Commissioner Campanella. We did have these discussions with our boards about first on the block, and part of the goal that we have is to acquire sufficient data of how these projects are being designed. And that's why we mentioned some reference to FAR. We had some architects not wanting to talk about FARs because there is a variation between designs based on where you are in the city, that we think that by acquiring the data, we will find, this is a test, we will find what projects the boards like, what were, what unique factors were there compared to the types of projects that were proposed. Medium-high projects are being proposed, high-density projects are being proposed in these priority areas. And the boards do recognize the density being proposed. We identify them on the agendas partly because of the desire that people know what is the maximum density proposed, and is this a high-dense priority area? And the boards react to that. They understand that those are differently zoned, and that's part of the compatibility criteria or definition, the design intent of the project and the land use designation of the site. So that'll be pointed out to them, so I think there will be a variation in how they evaluate projects.
Well, I think that's really great, and I see that's improving. We have the information, of course. It's improving in the project description. I think, given, you know, the story pole tools, et cetera, on projects that are becoming to us, the more information that could be provided to the design boards similar to the way we're going to see it in our evaluation, just the type of questions we're asking, but setting the stage for them to see that this particular site is somewhat different than others, and here's the intent, I think is really going to be helpful. So appreciate that. On, marking zones. Will there be updated design guidelines for, let's say, Haley, Milpas, Cota area? Because previously, the ones that are, in the past are outdated, had different types of designs depending on what particular street you might be on. Might be a more of industrial look or commercial look versus pueblo, depending on the block. So it was a mix, I think, depending on what particular street you were on. For compatibility purposes, since there's such an amalgam of different type of architecture in different periods, ultimately, will there be design guidelines that would be considerate of those three areas?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campanella, we have heard the request to update the Haley-Milpas guidelines on numerous occasions, and we too have that objective. It's not currently on our workload, at least for the next three years, I can say that. We wouldn't have adequate staff or resources to do it unless things change between now and what I see already on our workload for the Planning Division.
Good. Yeah, I think, you know, just watching, I think the design boards do an excellent job, you know, from a conceptual standpoint on what they have to work with, and, you know, we've seen, there's a good number of the infill projects that have been approved have come through the system. The, I think the tools are going to work well. The question I have is, sometimes there may be a conflict in, between the open space, more parking nexus. And there was, there was one of the design boards last week, one of the projects we're going to be seeing, I don't want to get into it, but as the draft minutes show, they got into parking, you know, talking about park more cars. I'm not saying they were wrong or didn't come from the right aspect, but it was a parking decision. And I think that, the question is, are they constantly reminded that that's not in their purview? Both design boards.
Yes. Commissioner Campanella, we as staff have had numerous trainings at this point, reminding them that the goal and the standard has been set by councils with respect to parking. What there is, though, is there are, there is some latitude with respect to the initial concept reviews, where they decide essentially how the site was, has been designed, and why the parking was placed in the manner it has been placed or proposed. And there are references in our guidelines that speak to how that is, can lead to additional height or be a combination of taking up open space that would otherwise be used for landscaping. So it is, it is a problem with certain designs, as you, as you can see, when they request more open space and yet the parking is driving the design. And they have accepted alternative solutions for open space. We've had roof decks designed that incorporate that livable area for, for it, and it's, it's going to be a trade and balancing act sometimes. And what we would like to have is the architects be aware that when they make those decisions, that they can defend those decisions with respect to what they did to balance that decision of where they placed the parking. And I believe even the guidelines show that there's consideration either way, whether you put the parking in an enclosed structure and what that does to the massing of the building, and as respect to even putting it outside where it's exposed to the public and how to screen that.
Okay, so nothing has changed. I know it's, there's been a suggestion, I don't know if it's in here or not, but the open space requirement under AUD is still going to be allowed to be off the ground, can be up in another level?
Commissioner Campanella, the design guidelines don't do anything to amend the ordinance that's currently in place, which does allow the common open area to be on any floor for AUD projects. I believe the guidelines do say, though, that if you do propose that as a roof deck, here's some ways that you can be sensitive about that.
That's, that's very appropriate. And that's, that's my, I think that's my, oh, one more. On the historic resources that we have to be sensitive to, both in making modifications to the structure as well as how to not, you know, be out of context with it, which both boards look at, the designated historical resource definition is different than potential. Potential, I see there's a number in the next meeting of HLC that are proposed by the historian to possibly come off the potential list. So as far as the building public, the development public, potential historic resources, are there a number of them out there that you would also be sensitive to, or is there some timeframe when those potential really become designated? What, what occurs?
Commissioner Campanella, I can answer that question. The, the issue with respect to the potentialist is that they, they in fact may be eligible for future designation. We are actually continuing to go through that potential list to identify how they lost their integrity and their integrity and should they still remain, or should they be moved to a designated structure. And there is a hierarchy involved with how the Historic Landmark Commission views designated versus non-designated resources. So, but there is more sensitivity for landmark structures. As a matter of fact, I've had pressure from the Historic Landmark Commission saying they would like to look at projects next to any landmark in the city, whether outside EPV. Now, you know, you can take this even further, but I think the ABR has qualified to check the process, the review of these projects, specifically because we have a historian. The historian's going to look at these guidelines and offer recommendations as to how they could be more compatible with the adjacent development. So I think that the process will work using these, and there will be sensitivity as to what level of significance that structure has.
And then just a related question, then. At one time, the marking or tracking system on properties that might be near historical resources, that been updated?
Yes, yes. We have actually a map area. It's a layer actually included in our GAS that identifies all the resources in the city, including the potential list. And we've also identified them with parcel tags. So if you have a parcel adjacent with, I think, 50 to 150 feet, you will be advised that you have a close, you're in close proximity to this sensitivity area.
So somebody to be aware going in, if they're acquiring a piece of property or want to develop, they understand what they have to be sensitive to.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Mr. Vincent, can you help us with whether or not maybe in other California cities there exists a definition of dorm in zoning codes, or whether or not there is a definition of dorm construction, building code, so that we could maybe better qualify what we want or don't want in terms of a formal definition?
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I, off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with definition of a dorm, per se. I have experience with the definition of boarding house, and I've found that that is dramatically difficult to interpret and enforce. Boarding house being, you could have a multi, a single-family home with multiple bedrooms, four or five bedrooms. It's a large, single-family home. You have unrelated individuals living on the other side of locked doors. That looks like a boarding house. But you don't find, we as the city, don't find out about the boarding house until the neighbors complain that there are too many cars parking on the street in front of said boarding house. Yet from every outward, other than the parking, other than the cars, the, the house looks like it's being occupied by individuals. And that gets back to your household question and so forth.
Yeah, so I think that's where this has to go, and I think this is better suited for the Housing Subcommittee in the form of a standard or an ordinance. But there's got to be places where, we're not the only community that has a college campus next to it, where there's a high demand for housing, and there's frankly, student housing that's, everybody knows what student housing looks like. But qualifying that in terms of a zoning code, where we want it and where we don't, I guess that's the stumbling block. So that's kind of a question, but...
And I could say this, I would, I'd be happy to look for if UC has a definition of a dorm, or if the building code has a definition of a dorm. In most cases, the dormitories for UC are on their campus, on their property. When they own the property, they're exempt from the city zoning. So you may not see the zoning, the local jurisdiction zoning overlaying. A lot of the student housing, you know, around the campus is just their apartment buildings that have been repurposed.
So, right. I would like to ask you to follow up with us on that, if you could. And then my second question is with respect to bathroom limitations, how comfortable are you with, I guess, the, given that we're the poster child for that particular effort in the past, the constitutionality of limiting a household's bathroom count in the confines of a zoning code or design guidelines, noting that those people that may prefer to have a limit on bathrooms may not have a teenage daughter?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I, I would say I'm, I'm okay with the constitutionality of telling property owners how they may develop their property. We do it all the time. We tell some people you have to have a red tile roof on your, on your building, whether you like it or not. We can, we can do it. The, where I would, the point I, the additional point I would make is, if we're going to come up with a, a flat number and say residential units under this program shall not have more than two bathrooms, I think that would be done in an ordinance. If, if we're getting at this dorm versus household kind of thing, and how the, the units are oriented, and how, how we expect them to be used because of the way they're designed, then that speaks more to a, a design review issue, and that the, we can inform the design review body with a guideline that says, you, when you see a design that looks inconsistent with the expectations of a particular housing program, you have the tools to address that, if that's the tool you want to use. But if the, I don't, I don't see where two bathrooms are okay in these units, and that's fine, or, and three is bad. And the, we really haven't had much of a gloss on that issue, not to mention, even to the point of, are we talking about a half bath, or are these full baths? I mean...
Right. That's my, my next question was, what's a bathroom? So I guess the, you know, the, the exercise with respect to development standards or red tile roofs comes with much more analysis and formal nexus, I suppose, that would need to be evaluated. Last question for staff, what, what are we seeing in terms of appeals of design review board decisions up to council in the last two years? Can you, can we quantify how much more, how many more projects have popped up to city council on appeal? So we have a relief, a release valve for when an applicant or a neighbor doesn't agree with... That, that release valve exists up to council. Is it being exercised more? And if so, how much more?
Right. If I can answer that, Commissioner Higgins, we had, when the program first came up, some initial reluctance to have the commission and the boards accept their role. And what I mean by that is that they questioned whether some projects should be referred to the Planning Commission as, as a way to figure out whether these concerns about parking and open space and even configuration should be done. Now, what we've learned is having the council give them clear direction that it's their role to decide, that applicants have decided to revise their projects to achieve an approval project. There, there is, there's less desire to go through an appeal process when we have a board saying we're not supportive of your design at the current, you know, level. And so the only ones that have been brought forward typically are neighbors that are concerned with the, the design of the, of the project. And we've had one in our four zone, and we've had one in a commercial zone at this point.
So, and my question of staff earlier in the week was, in terms of context, what are we talking about here? We're rallying around this routine here for a couple of different reasons, but, but it's project-specific stuff. So Bond Street, and these are projects that are not on the agenda, I realize, but they have already gone through the approval process. So I assume it's okay to reference them. Bond Street and 1818 Castillo, those, those had their day in court in terms of council appeals.
Well, I want to clarify, Bond was a dormitory-type design, which was four stories, where you had adjacent single-family development in close proximity. And they thought that was incompatible based on that total lot line to lot line development. And so the, the applicant was sent to, back to redesign, and they in fact did design, redesign, and proposed something else, a difference. So what we were trying to point out is, is there have been concerns expressed by the board and residents saying, that's not an appropriate type building here, and be careful to not approve it, because we may appeal it on that, those grounds.
So, yeah, my question is, in light of existing city protocols, release valves for when the process may break down in somebody's opinion, there is a, there's an appeal process in place. And, and I understand that the exercise here is that, as a result of AUD, we increased the role or responsibility of, of the design review boards without giving them more tools. So we have lots of tools, they have lots of tools, they're adapting to their increased authority as, as they've heard from council, and this is maybe papering back that trail of responsibility and authority, right?
That's correct. In, in a perfect world, we would have had these guidelines in place at the time the AUD program was adopted.
Okay. So I think with that, if there's no more questions, we can go to Commissioner comments. We do have another question.
Just wanted to follow up, you know, having followed, as Commissioner Lodge does with HLC, but having followed ABR in the cases, applicants are working with the design boards, and from objectives, looking objectively, the goal is to keep the number of units that they can, but sacrifice, whether it's a one-bedroom or two-bedroom or studio, in order to accomplish that. I think now roughly on the priority and high, we're averaging about one and a half bedrooms per unit. So the, I think the goal is to try to keep the doors and work with the stories and number of units in either anticipation or response to design criteria. So I think the design boards are having that effect, and I wanted to follow up on that comment from what I can observe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Let's, let's just go to the questions asked of staff, and I'd like to go commissioner by commissioner for each question. We are going to take a straw poll. So if in your comments, you can try to answer the question so that Ms. Rodriguez can take a tally of those commissioners that are answering in support or not in support of the question, whether yes or no, and where there's color commentary required, you know, don't be shy. So we'll start with Commissioner Schwartz. One question at a time. And keeping in mind, we have four questions, four and a half questions, times six. If you could be as concise as possible, that probably will help us get through this in the next hour.
Mr. Chair, I'm having a bit of a difficulty pulling in my thoughts that purely are a yes-no to the slides that Mr. Bowman put up. Can I give you, for example, and maybe somebody can help me figure out if there's a direct alignment. I want to start right off by agreeing with staff, and this goes to the question I posed them on page three of the staff report. I agree with staff's concerns, and also believe that regulating the number of bathrooms, the interior unit configurations, and required parking should not be part of design guidelines. So let me stop there. If that's my position on those three items that staff has identified as their concerns, where would I correlate that with comments one, two, three, three A, and four? So I appreciate that they've been raised, but I also agree with staff that they don't belong in design guidelines. Should I just go right down the list of those types of comments that I have?
Yes, I think you... Give us your comments, but try your best to give, at the end of your comments, to each question.
All right.
Your answer.
Mr. Bowman, can you help me out there?
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you.
We intended question number one to be strictly to the guidelines in exhibit three for the ABR and HLC. Questions one and two would just be on the guidelines in exhibit three.
Okay.
And then question three would be about the guidelines on page three of the staff.
Okay, let me go to one. I'll see, and maybe you can help me. You heard a number of my, my questions that are on the other, other side, you know, of the ledger, their, their comments or concerns. So my difficulty with, my difficulty with just saying yes or no to number one is, and you said, look at exhibit three, these are the draft infill design guidelines. I mentioned to you, and I still have concerns about how these terms are inconsistently and without definition used, size, mass, bulk, height, scale. So that they're being brought forward as issues, they're not defined, and they're not used consistently. So I don't know if they adequately address the design concerns. That's number one. I still have an issue with the term neighborhood that's used very frequently in here, and I think has and continues to pose problems for our review boards in making clear and consistent with regulatory certainty for applicants, how to define neighborhood, and that is neighborhood compatibility. The other types of items that are identified in exhibit three are appropriate to raise. I just, I don't think I have any more specifics on that, other than what some members of the public, specifically from the AIA, have brought forward, which I would, again, recommend that staff circle back around with the AIA for more discussion. Okay, let me see. Does that do it for your, that slide? Staff, does that do it for that slide? Or Mr. Bowman, do you want to direct me to another exhibit, like exhibit four, or, or that, does that correlate with a different slide, different comment slide?
Mr. Chair, I guess, as I'm, as I've read the staff report and, and so forth, one, one aspect of this question one is not so much a matter of the, the guidelines themselves, but were there any topics that the, that members of the public routinely bring to bear regarding ABR or HLC hearings that have not been addressed? I mean, I know that the, all of the commissioners watch ABR hearings and HLC hearings, and do you, has, have these guidelines addressed all of the issues that are commonly raised by members of the public? Or has, have the ABR and HLC somehow missed a topic that you, you know, so that would just be another thought. Not only do the guidelines, how, how well do the guidelines do the job that they're doing, but also have, have the ABR and HLC or staff missed any of the topics that the public routinely brings to bear? And, you know, I doubt that there are any topics like that, but if you have one, that's, I think that would be responsive to question one.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't know where, I don't know how household made its way into a supplemental draft design guidelines as a reference to required occupancy tied to parking. So I'll, that, that's a lingering concern of mine, even after hearing Mr. Vincent's definition. I, I think that's problematic, could even be prejudicial in our decision-making for applicants, but I'll let staff wrestle with that. The only thing I haven't heard, and Mr. Limone referenced it, and I guess it's just not going to get in the work program, but I think it's so critical, and that is to revisit, to align, and update, and modernize our design guidelines for that whole Haley-Gutierrez-Milpas neighborhoods, multiple neighborhoods, that part of our city. You know, to me, we're tinkering around the edges with trying to create new tools, new design guidelines, when we don't have a framework like we have on Upper State Street. That, to me, is such an important set of guideline tools for all of our decision-making bodies. And without having that, and I don't know how you can convince council to allocate the budget to allow you the resources to do it, but I think, I think that's critical. Now, again, that's not on you, but I'm just saying I think that continues to be missing. I don't know that any other topic is missing, going back to Mr. Vincent's point, between the review boards, the council, and what I've heard from members of the public, I, I don't see anything missing. Okay, that's comments one, right? Move on? No, you want me to go through, you want me to go through quickly?
Let's have Commissioner...
Oh, you want to just go one, 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 and then come back? Okay.
Yes, I think that's what Ms. Rodriguez had in mind. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Campanella.
Yeah, I, I think a good job was done on the consideration that the boards are going to have. And I think, you know, to have any infill development, AUD, or hotels, or anything else, or non-residential, to be successful, you're going to have to have these considerations. Otherwise, the public's going to question what's going on. And I, I think this is pretty exhaustive and complete to look at, and the process, and have the public know what process is going on at the board level. But I agree with Commissioner Schwartz. I think maybe some, well, three things. One, inclusion of consideration for residential, the multifamily residential and commercial properties when looking at compatibility. Whatever is in Haley, Cota, Milpas, right now, relative to existing, I think has to be looked at for compatibility. And hopefully in the future, there's some design guidelines, or it's a mix of uses that can be there. But I think that consideration has to be addressed by the boards as well. So it's not just the continuation of, let's say, one architectural type that may not currently exist throughout the, the area. And then, and two, thirdly, thirdly, I'd, I'd like to make sure... And then, and two, thirdly, thirdly, I'd like to make sure that the comments of the architects that we've received are addressed either at the, hopefully they're, yeah, they would be addressed, you'd be hopefully addressing those with ABR and HLC, so you can maybe respond back, or the architects can see the result of their questions before it goes to city council, so some of these could be vetted and explained. Hopefully you will do that. That's my third item on number one.
Commissioner Wiskom, question number one.
Okay, I, I agree that, I think that they did a, the two boards did a fine job in putting these together. I think there's quite a bit of wordsmithing yet to do on them to, to really make them clear. The compatible and, what is it, the one that Mr. Puchel recommended? Consistent, yes. That, that's very definitely something that needs to be sorted out, because that was something that I noticed in here, too. And also, I, I think improvement in the language for the livability is, is important. So, so both applicants and the design review boards have, you know, the latitude to, to discuss that appropriately. And the other thing that I would like to see, that I didn't see in here, that I think might help both the applicant and the review board, is where you're reviewing a project, I'm on page three, and I think probably under number one, design new buildings to fit into the streetscape, I would have put appropriately fit into the streetscape, but consider all design elements for compatibility and consistency with adjacent buildings and with immediate neighborhood. And I also think there should be something in there about with projects that have been permitted for construction, so that, you know, if there is a project that's been approved, that can go in there as a consideration by both the applicant for compatibility and by the board for consistency and compatibility in the neighborhood. And I think, I think that's, that's about all I have. I just, I would encourage, the, oh, the other comment I have is on, I think that there should be more emphasis on streetscape. I didn't see a lot of that, and also landscape. You know, we adopted an urban forest management plan, and there's language in there about relating that to the design review boards and the benefits of optimizing tree canopy for, for shade and energy conservation. And I think that would be significant to, to add that to the language, to make sure that, that landscaping is fairly treated just for the benefit of our streetscapes, our neighborhoods, and for the health of our residents. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan, question number one.
Really? Well, okay, so I'm sort of feel like you make. I'm going to respect your guidance there, but I have a whole bunch more comments that I want to make, not related to four yes or no answers, okay? So I think the wording's really bad there. Adequately address, because I don't think you can adequately address the concerns in a guideline. I think exactly the concerns that staff has raised and staff has talked about, those are only going to be addressed through a, a set of ordinances that probably come through the task force. I would prefer to see a phrase in there like adequately acknowledge or adequately identify, and then I could answer yes to that sentence. I certainly can't answer yes to that sentence as it is now.
Commissioner Lodge, good, leading by example.
These guidelines came about because both ABR and HLC struggled a great deal, and there was a great deal of angst when these AUD projects first started coming through. I think they, I would agree with Commissioner Jordan that, that they adequately identify. It's hard to say the, we don't know whether they adequately address the design concerns, but I think they do identify them. And, and they should be a help. I know members of the council have said to the design review boards, when they've raised their concerns about, you know, we don't, they didn't feel they had the tools they needed. I'll just say no. I think this gives them a little bit more in the terms of the ability to say no.
I would agree with Commissioner Lodge and Jordan. You've captured the concepts and the concerns, but some of these things are better placed in a, in a ordinance. So for example, under building design height enassing, item four, it seems to be treading on a standard FAR, that is, that can be better elaborated or identified, or quantified. Site planning and open space, for open space and landscaping, item two, seems to beg either very much a softening of that language with some shoulds, or mayes, or coulds, or otherwise provide lots of standards, which we can do, I think, better as a result of some ordinance development. Livability and privacy, item number two is the same, and under the same category, item 11 as well. So let's move on to question number two, if we could. Do the guidelines provide the needed tools to the ABR and HLC to ensure compatible projects while advancing the objectives of the AUD program? Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Campanella, you had a question?
I have a question for staff.
Sure, go ahead.
Is that the way the information was presented, is that sufficient for what you needed? We were in agreement on a lot of items, and then there were some others added. Are you fine with that? Sorry, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay, so the phrase here is needed tools, and I would say, I don't think that these are needed tools for ABR and HLC. As I began saying, I agree with staff on the concerns they have as to what should be in design guidelines versus in a policy, in an ordinance, policy directive document. And so I think there needs to be an unbundling, as I would put it, of the difference between appropriate guidelines for review boards versus what should be in ordinances, and I already went over that, I don't think I need to revisit that. Let me also mention on page three of the staff report, under supplemental draft guidelines, the phrase require that projects of five or more units be sent to the planning commission for comments. The issue of what triggers would result in projects, AUD projects in particular, coming to the planning commission, has gone round and round for now, a couple of years. And so I'm not sure why it's coming back around again. I already expressed my comments in public and on the record before, but if, I will say, if for some reason either this commission or the task force of the council wants to change the current process flow, shall we call that, to require additional AUD projects to come to the commission, here's what I will say that I've said before, because I still hold this position, and that is that simple comments are not effective, and they're not productive. It can't just be directive comments back to review board. We either, as we heard from a speaker today, have to have teeth in the process and have to be making approvals, or denials, or conditioning something to go back with changes, but to just make comments, I think, is not a valuable use of everybody's time, nor an applicant's money. Furthermore then, I would say regarding exhibits three and four, and this phrase here in this slide, compatible projects while advancing the objectives of the AUD, I've already given you comments about some of the language that I think bears or requires definition, further definition, which I would still recommend you go back to. And then lastly, I would like to direct your attention, this is page two of exhibit three. In the last paragraph, the very last sentence reads, "The ABR slash HLC should consider the objectives of the AUD program," and then it goes on, "while ensuring." The word consider, I think, is too loose and too discretionary, and I've discussed this, I think, with Mr. Limone and perhaps others on staff. I think it's important that when we have a policy in place, that there is a clear sense of obligation or responsibility by a review board to use that as, I don't know if we want to call it a guiding principle, or perhaps you or Mr. Vincent has some other term, but consider, to me, seems too soft, it's too open and discretionary in terms of whether they take it or leave it as they consider a policy, and then as they overlay design guidelines on top of whether or not they want to take seriously or take into their obligation a policy that's, that's a foundation for which they're making their findings, they're making their decisions. So now let me go back, and the bottom line is, I don't think we're providing the correct tools, it says needed, the correct tools to ensure to be defined compatibility while advancing the objectives of the AUD. And I like the word advancing, because that's what we intended when we crafted this ordinance and this policy. Thank you.
Commissioner Campanella, question two.
Okay, the text on page two talks about a balance, but.
Which document?
I'm sorry, the guidelines. Sorry, not the staff report, guidelines themselves, which you, I think you were referring to on there. It talks about balancing, but I, I'd like to see a little more weight to the program itself in talking about the objectives of what's trying to be done relative to smaller houses, smaller-sized buildings in some of the zones, and trying to fit in as best as possible. But, you know, it's still a question of costs, eliminating third stories, or in all cases, increasing parking and open space may be great from design, but, you know, how do you consider what the effect is of possibly turning in the, current apartment proposal into luxury condos in the future because of what's being done from a design standpoint? So I'd like to see a little more explanation of what's trying to be achieved by the AUD, and not get, I'm concerned about getting to a point where three stories, four stories are going to be not even considered, don't come in with an application, or three stories, but that those would be allowed in certain situations, and you have to give a fair look at it. So I, I would support this with the addition of a little more language, a little more language on the, on the AUD program itself, and whereas you can't accept, you don't have to accept all of the incentives, but at the meantime, you shouldn't rule out certain incentives just because you're concerned about height in all cases, for example, eliminating a fourth story. Because with parking and other requirements, it may work in certain zones. So that's my feeling on that particular point. I don't think it's balanced to the degree I'd like to see, more towards the AUD, what it's, what it's trying to achieve and what it may look like. Thanks.
Commissioner Wiskom, question two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be short on this one. I, I think the, the purpose of these guidelines is to give some flexibility both to the design review boards and, and also give the applicants some direction on acceptable design techniques. And I think that these guidelines, with respect to the AUD, the objectives of the AUD program, probably fall short and, and fall short in that they don't give enough, I guess, teeth in the game to the design review boards to, to address some of the compatibility issues, and, and they would include parking and bathrooms. So I think that, that probably some of the language needs to be strengthened in those areas. And I realize that they are guidelines, so you have to use, you know, words that, that represent guidelines, not ordinances. So, you know, perhaps wording like encourage and discourage are, are appropriate to help the review boards gain that latitude.
Commissioner Jordan, question two, and by the way, Commissioner Jordan, we'll have, we'll give you some equal time here on the tail end of these questions.
I think this one, I might be able to knock off a few of my comments.
Okay.
So the short answer is, I don't know the answer to the question, because I have opinions on the whole document, so I, I think really that's a question to ABR and HLC. I can find some comments, I think, that relate to this question, and that is that I think you could be strong, although I see it repetitively throughout the era, throughout your, your draft guidelines, you could even, even be stronger in your language that tempers the belief that a zoning ordinance is a, a given rather than a potential allowance. And that's, of course, what you see all the time when it comes to design, and you do, you do state it repetitively, but I think you could do it even more. And then you could also put in there, too, I think the other half of the coin that I don't see in there anywhere at all, is an acknowledgement, addressing the public's concern to the fact that most parcels in Santa Barbara are undeveloped per the zoning ordinance right now. And people don't believe that when they see what's going up next door to them, but they've been underdeveloped forever. And that doesn't mean that something's coming along that shouldn't be approved, because it was underdeveloped. And so I, I don't know if you can fit that in somewhere or not. I think the part on the top of page two about the study section of 10 closest properties is too small. I would like to see it bigger. I could see a situation like that where that would just be two houses on each side of a property, and I think that's, that's, that's really small to be used as a, as a I sort of followed Commissioner Campanella's talk on the balance, but I think maybe what I took from this is, when you talked about a balance, you really, to me, you didn't speak to the fact that an example of balance at one location can, could probably never be used as a same example of balance at another location. Everything is so site-specific now in this issue, that, that even if you can come to grips with what a view of balance is, it's only for that particular time and place, it's just a snapshot right there. It, it can't be used anywhere else. And then in each section, not in each section, in the first two sections, you start off under the subject matter, and tell me, and you tell me really well why. So for average unit density incentive, I'm sorry, for, for design, build, height, enassing, your intro sentences, they tell me why it's important. For site planning and open space, you tell me why it's important. But then when you get to the last two, the livability and privacy and the historic resources, there's no intro there that tells me why it's important. You just kind of go right to the, the stuff, and you don't really give me a couple sen, and I, I know why, but that doesn't mean anybody else knows why. But you don't really give a preface there on what it means, why it's important, and I think you're short a couple sentences there to at least help that along. And then, in the last section on historic resources after, on the last, on page seven, I don't see anything in those points above it, the 1211, that actually talks about what I would call physical consequences related to loss of sunlight, or loss of air that affects historical resource buildings, and also to, you know, loss, what I would, what I would term, in my layman's terms, would be loss of views of that historical resource from adjacent areas. And I think that's, that's, that again is a site-specific consideration. You know, when we covered up a blank wall of the Arlington, was that as big a deal as putting something down the street at, at 800 Santa Barbara Street that covers up part of Presidio? I don't know, might be, might be not. But, but I didn't really see anything above there that, that gave me that option to consider that. Okay, I think I knocked off some of my comments. Thanks. Commissioner Lodge.
Well, I think I'll, I'll say yes. I'm not sure. I think it's a
Well, I think I'll say yes. I'm not sure. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. I think the answer to the question is yes until I get to the second part of the question. I lost it, but it gives A B R and H L C plenty of great tools with respect to compatibility, but I don't know that we, you know, it's a little too soon to tell. Car before the horse with respect to A U D. There's a process under which the city is, what's the matter? That there's a process by which A U D is being looked at. And until that process plays out, it's hard for us to tell whether or not some of the language herein is going to put a governor on A U D. And I think that we need to let that process play out first before we comment on how appropriate these guidelines are for A U D. So let's go to question number three, if we could, to Commissioner Schwartz.
Simple answer, no. That's it.
Commissioner Caponella.
Am I getting some of your time?
I already answered it previously because it's staff's commentary as well.
Just kidding. Okay. Yeah, I think this, these need to be looked at at the task force level. I agree with staff. As Mr. Vincent pointed out, you know, we could have situations where there's a half bath. And as a matter of fact, we had a project in this past week at A B R that had a, it was a four unit building with, we're not going to be seeing it, so I can talk about it, but it was two townhouses on the end and then four garages in between with flats on top. And the two townhouses had a half bath down, two bedrooms, two baths upstairs. It's a typical configuration that one would have to service guests and also service family members. And there's probably other situations as well. As far as parking, and we may get to that at the task force, we may recommend that, what the proposal was in here, but I'd like to do it through the vision of the task force and in collection of information and looking at all sides of the issue. Same thing on parking. We know parking is critical. I think we need to look at a number of factors on that, including, I'll throw one out, there may be some three bedroom historical units that are being preserved, you know. And so that might be an incentive to reduce parking or may not be. Maybe you should continue to park that historical resource, but maybe because of setbacks, et cetera, you can't. So there may be situations we want to look at that in general, we come up with, with the task force, and there may be other situations that we want to make exceptions for. And I think we should wait until we can delve into that with the combination of city council, planning commission members, and whatever outside help we need to explore it. So I would say no on three, three A.
Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm going to take the opposite approach and say yes because I, guidelines will be overridden by an ordinance. And I think that it's important until, until the task force finishes their work that we give some sort of latitude to the design review boards to address this. There's a lot of concern in the city about inadequate parking with the A U D developments going in. And I don't have much experience with the bathrooms, but I can understand the concept. And I think that implementing some guidelines that give them those tools that can red flag those projects that might have these potential problems is important until the task force finishes its work and makes its recommendations and it makes its way back to city council for perhaps some changes in the A U D program. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan.
I can finally answer yes to half a question anyhow, maybe for the different, for different reasons. But I already think that clearly that the design review boards do consider those as part of their size, bulk and scale drivers and compatibility. If you increase the number of bathrooms, you're increasing size, bulk and scale and maybe the compatibility. I also think it's been made very clear by council that they are able to consider those, that they put the, they've taken, they've taken that part of the, of the process for in particular A U D projects and taken it down to the design board level. So I've heard that recurrently when talking about the two projects, at least, and more, that you guys have referenced today that were appealed. I'd have to say no to three A because I think also that once you get past a consideration stage and try and reconcile a guideline with a limit, that it's no longer a guideline. And the limit is more appropriately found in an ordinance. And that should come through either an ordinance process or as a result of the ongoing task force discussions. So I think yes to the first part. I think they, I don't think we're telling, I hope we're not telling them anything they don't already know. And then to the supplemental parts, definitely not. I think those are more suited to both the task force and a formal ordinance.
Commissioner Lodge.
I was initially going to say no, but I agree with Commissioner Wiskom that until the housing task force has had the opportunity to consider these two issues, that parking and bathroom limitations, that it should, yes, the first part should go ahead. And then, and then the three A would be... Well, it's better than nothing. Let's put it that way.
I would say no is my general answer, again, with respect to development standards. I just am not convinced that we have done the homework to potentially override some of what's in our general plan. And I'm sorry, I can't find it here, but I thought there was some, I know there's language there that says our general plan is oriented towards the production of workforce housing, and that's the highest priority above all others. And I see some of this as a governor to slow down workforce housing. And so until the policies are changed in the form of the A U D and the housing task force to do that, I think this is premature. So I would like to ask staff to come back and at some point through the rest of your process to the city council and other designer review boards to include some analysis of, as to what the general plan says in our housing policies with respect to the production of workforce housing. We can move on to question number four unless somebody had another comment. Commissioner Caponella?
Okay. So are we just taking, so that's just comments? So I heard, did I?
Well, we're answering questions. I think at the end, we'll, we can have, if you'd like, provide comments unrelated to the questions.
Not unrelated. I have comments relative to the, I guess I have a comment relative to the votes that we're taking on the question and how that's handled. But I'll wait till after number four. I've got a question on this one.
Go for it.
Okay. What happens now? I mean, we have three members here, we have, I think I heard...
Three, three.
Three, three, which means what? Do we officially have to take a motion?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Caponella, right. So what we heard in terms of yes or no answers, it was three, three. But I also heard there were nuances to those yeses or nos. And so I think we can convey that to city council. If we needed to try to distill that down a little bit more, I, I'm presuming based on some of the reasons some of you said yes or no, is that perhaps maybe regulating bathrooms and unit configuration and design guidelines, you might feel one way in particular about that versus parking. If there's a distinction, if we lumped too many things in that question and you want to split that out and that might change your yes or no, I just offer that to you. But otherwise, I've heard the nuances to your yes or no questions, the reasons for it, and I think we can convey that to council.
Well, let me, let me just comment on that. I think just, we have three members up here that are members of the task force. They're going to be reviewing this on the task force. So I understand what their feelings are, but my own feeling is if you're on the task force, you review this and you're going to relay it to the council. Does that come off the task force list? Which means it's done here without input from four other members of the task force.
Commissioner Caponella, I am not assuming that anything decided here about the relevancy of these issues in design guidelines would affect the work effort of the task force. Because the work effort of the task force is really to consider potential amendments to the A U D ordinance. And so what the planning commission's recommendation is to council here about the appropriateness of these concerns addressed through design guidelines does not mean that you couldn't also still or better address it through an ordinance amendment. It's not, in other words, prohibiting you from continuing those discussions on the task force.
Okay. And then what happens to the design guidelines if we go the other way? On the task force?
If you go the other way?
Meaning we say no to the, you know, you're passing our comments, but it could either be one way or the other. Let's say if the task force decides not to change the parking or in the same way, or the task force determines not to change the bathroom count. I'm not saying they will.
Understood. Right. Because we do expect these design guidelines would be to council in April and the task force work would not be complete. True.
Okay. So there'll be, there could be an inconsistency.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
My yes was an interim yes.
I understand that.
And so I don't see it as being a conflict here.
So some commissioners are conveying that there should be some form of a stopgap or Band-Aid or something before the time that the housing task force is complete. I understand what's happening there, but if you could answer Mr. Camp, Commissioner Caponella's question.
Thank you. And I might offer another solution to that. So when we go to the council with a recommendation to adopt design guidelines and what form they are at that time, we could also ask them if they wanted to consider an interim measure of some sort under a separate motion or a separate policy administrative direction to staff to do that. We could do, if, under the premise that it'd be an interim, not something that we necessarily or council, if they decide to have it in adopted guidelines that are written and produced for multiple reasons, if what they might only be considering is an interim measure that may be in effect for six months, that could be done through a resolution on its own.
Let me ask you, I know Mr. Vincent, last time, some suggestions came up for items that might be ordinance changes. You were quite specific with the city council. What would require an ordinance change, if I recall?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I would answer Commissioner Caponella's question in this way. The city council kind of tasked us with a number of these things relatively ad hoc, I mean, kind of off the cuff. Certainly, the way I took the December 13th direction to staff in part was, in particularly about this issue of should we do bathrooms? Should we do parking? Should we do this kind of stuff? Should five projects of five or more come to the planning commission? I took the, they wanted us to bring these topics to you to get your input and that they would utilize the input that they receive from the, from the commission to inform their decision on the guidelines, some interim step, and also in the future. And then they'll, they'll take the task force's recommendations when they're ready. I would submit that we've heard your comments. We will synthesize those comments and put them together with staff recommendations when these guidelines move up to the city council for their consideration. And we'll try to package something that gives them the option, provides them a menu of options that certainly the guidelines, that work has been anticipated by the council, that's going back to them. And we'll bring forward the other options so they can, can consider the question of what topics should be handled in the guidelines with your comments and your advice as well as their own, their own council. The last point I would make is to Commissioner Caponella's question, we'll deal with any inconsistencies if and when the council makes new ordinance amendments. When, you know, we'll take their direction on those ordinance amendments. If those are inconsistent with any interim guidelines, those inconsistencies will be resolved at that time. And so at the same time that they adopt any ordinance amendments, any inconsistencies in the guidelines will be amended as well.
Well, I'm sorry not to let this go, but I guess that's why we, we have discussions. But what we have here is, is a non-quantifiable item. However, whether it goes away in the future or not, it's a non-quantifiable item of how many, when, that can be totally up to the discretion of the design board, which could affect the feasibility of a project. That's why we have a task force. Okay? There's nothing that says here it's a half out or you can have two cars for three bedrooms. There are things that are being discussed. They may require two cars for two bedrooms because the neighbors complain about the neighborhood without any fact finding. We're leaving carte blanche to factors that can undermine the program without researching whether these work or not. Okay? So I say, I, if we have a three, three vote on this, I say we go along with what staff's recommendation is because we haven't decided on something different. And let staff make their recommendation to the city council relative to wait until the task force reviews it. My colleagues here will have another opportunity to address that when it gets to the task force rather than trying to undo something that maybe doesn't get undone.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Before we move on, I would just like to comment for the record that I think, if anything, some comparative research by staff could be warranted in terms of other comparable communities that struggle with these issues. I myself did research, design versus ordinance in a number of coastal communities, and I could not find one city in which bathrooms, unit configurations, and parking spaces fall under a review board purview. So I just would caution us that we not be an outlier. I know we're unique in many ways, but I don't think this is one way in which it serves the community to really shift a paradigm without staff, and with Mr. Vincent's assistance, very carefully looking at what could be precedent setting if, if I don't characterize it in any other way, I'll leave it at that. And then I don't know if you want us to move on, Mr. Chair.
I would like to take a straw poll as to question number three, just for clarity for staff, whether or not we could have a three B here relative to bathroom and unit configuration. So in other words, can we just bifurcate this for a minute? You have your responses on question three. I'd like a straw poll of how many commissioners feel as though it's appropriate now to keep bathroom count and unit configuration in the confines of this design guideline document. If you do, please say aye.
You mean the answer to three aye?
No, I'm saying just with respect to, so in other words, we have our answers for three?
And three aye?
No.
No.
I would like to know how many commissioners feel as though it's appropriate to potentially limit the number of bathrooms within the confines of the design guidelines.
Bathrooms or park, or are you looking at just specifically item number three, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. And we're not looking at three A, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's bathrooms and parking. Consider that the, that the boards would be able to consider bathroom limitations and require additional parking, reasonable application of the design guidelines. That's what you want us to vote on?
Would just like to know if you feel as though bathroom limitations are appropriate in these design guidelines.
So we're not talking about parking?
Correct.
Well, that's not what we were asked.
I know that's, that's what I'm asking. Is that helpful?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, these were recommended questions from staff. You're more than welcome to make up your own questions and answer them if you think they'll be useful for this discussion. So what I'm hearing right now is the chair is suggesting bifurcating question three A into two parts. One part being asking, is parking appropriate for guidelines? And question two, or three B, is bathroom room configuration and bathroom count appropriate for guidelines?
I'm just trying to break a little bit of a logjam with the three, three in concern in response to Commissioner Caponella's concern. So would that, does that help? I guess if it doesn't help... I guess if it doesn't help staff, then I'll let it go. But if it would help staff in terms of unanimity from the commission on certain aspects of what's being presented, we could call for a straw poll on that.
Mr. Chair, I believe it would help, even if we got down to the same vote. At least, we've taken sort of the areas internal to a unit and areas external to a unit. That's helpful information.
Commissioner Jordan?
So, I don't like the way you just explained it, or Mr. Vincent explained it. I could see if you split question three, but I'm not interested in changing an answer, well, I guess I have the answer. I'm not interested in acknowledging staff's attempt to write the language as they have in the staff report. I would be more interested in splitting up the question of three, three without the A, separate bathroom question and separate parking.
Okay.
With the word "consider."
Let's do that, then.
Right? Because you're, the way you explained it, you said go 3A, 3B, but that refers back to the specific language that staff wrote out.
I didn't want to pull anybody's votes off the table, but...
And the word "consider" is the operative word in?
For some of us.
Yes, it's still there.
Okay.
So, is the approach of having ABR and HLC consider bathroom limitations?
Mr. Chair?
A reasonable application of the design guidelines?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Campanella.
I am really troubled by what's going on here, okay? And I haven't said that before, but I am. These are items that, while well-meaning, okay, maybe, can affect the feasibility of a project. And to leave it to design boards to make an ordinance change, which in effect it is, and then have to reach, in effect it's an ordinance change without having an ordinance change.
Commissioner Campanella, I agree with you.
Okay.
And so, that was my assumption, as though my fellow commissioners would feel the same. And if they don't, then we at least have that on record. So, bathroom count, to me, is treading into a place of regulation that staff has said is uncomfortable, despite Mr. Vincent's legal comfort. I particularly, I agree with staff. I think I have never seen anywhere in any agency where I've ever worked where bathroom counts are limited or otherwise regulated. We don't even have a definition of bathroom. So, I was just trying to get a little bit more clarity for staff on this particular question. Commissioner, does anybody else have a comment about where we're heading here? Commissioner Jordan?
No, I'd just like to offer the alternative viewpoint, and at the risk of annoying Council Member Hart, who is a firm proponent of the status quo as it is, I have heard him repeatedly sit right here and say that he expects the design boards to apply their judgment in cases where obviously parking and/or excess bathrooms are affecting the compatibility, the neighborhood character, and that type of thing. So, having language in there that just, to me, reinforces what they've already been tasked with, does not threaten this, or does not work to counteract what's happening. It just, it is another tool to reinforce two groups that initially were not comfortable with making those calls with those new tasks, to reassure them that they could make those calls.
Okay, so I get it. You're saying something that is in stark contrast to what Commissioner Campanella's saying. So, you're treating it as a guideline. Commissioner Campanella is giving it much more weight because of its...
As I said before, I think as a guideline that already exists based on direction given by council.
I would agree. Well, we have all kinds of tools in the toolbox right now for people to appeal project decisions by HLC and ABR as well, all the way up the food chain. So, again, to staff, would it be helpful for us to pair out these three sets of standards? One, parking. Two, configuration. Three, bathroom count for this question? Or do you have enough from us in terms of commentary right now?
Mr. Chair, we've attempted to do that on the slide here. We've broken it into two questions. You've attempted to also ask that question. I am hearing everything the commission is saying, and I do understand there's concern by some commissioners, and so I would expect that would then result in a no vote. But that helps us convey that to council, these concerns in a yes or no vote.
Okay, I'd like to go forward with a straw poll, and I do appreciate Commissioner Campanella's position as to how this could affect or influence what happens at the Housing Task Force, but it's here, it's been agendized, we ought to give our opinions, especially if we can't participate in those Housing Task Force meetings. So, if I could have a vote on question one on the board, is the approach of having ABR and HLC consider bathroom limitations a reasonable application of design guidelines?
Can we do a voice roll call?
Let's do a voice roll call.
Commissioner Schwartz? No, and I think this is an end run around ordinance enactment and the work of the very diverse Housing Task Force. Commissioner Campanella?
No.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins?
No. Okay, well...
Let me look at what we've got.
Three nays. Let's have a party. One, two, three noes.
Would any of the commissioners' votes change for the other two subjects?
No.
We got the information. You have what you need. Thank you for your indulgence, everybody. On question three, let's go to question four. Okay. Does the Planning Commission wish to review and provide comments to the ABR, HLC on all A U D projects proposing five or more units? Can I ask, though, to clarify, what does this mean? Are we reviewing these projects after they go or before they go? Or just give me some, I'm sure you covered that already, but I missed it.
No, I don't think we did, Mr. Chair. And again, and Mr. Vincent said this direction was given to us by council sort of on an ad hoc basis. There was not context to it, but the motion in the council's minutes specifically say, "Bring to the Planning Commission's consideration of the following items to be included in the proposed infill design guidelines." And this one specifically reads, "Projects of five units or more to be sent to the Planning Commission for comments." So, they did say for comments.
Commissioner Lodge, do you have a question or a comment about the question?
Well, I just wanted to concur with Commissioner Schwartz's comment before, that if it's just for comments, it's not worth our time.
Did you want to go down the row, Mr., how do you want to do this, Mr. Chair?
Sure, we can go, start with you, Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay. To me, it's not a matter of wishing or reviewing, but I do think that the current triggers are acceptable with the one caveat that I mentioned earlier, and that is, when projects do come to the Planning Commission, and if the process changes, if that changed the triggers, so be it. But when they do, when the A U D projects come here, they need to come for more than commentary. We need to have full authority, full review authority with decision-making approval, whether or not it's going back to a review board or onto council. Otherwise, and I have believed that it's not effective process as it exists today. Thank you.
Yeah, my comment is, if you want to buy stock in a story pole company, I think we should have five or more units come to us, because right now, a trigger on story poles is anything we require to come to us requires story poles. And you have maybe 20 projects that are in the R3, R4 zone that are two stories, or less, two or three, that would not have to come to us, except if it's coming to us. And I don't think we need to be into that small a number of units. The larger projects in the priority overlay have a larger number of units that we should be looking at as now, but not delving into every small 5,000-square-foot lot, or 10,000 square-foot lot that has a couple of units in the R3, R4 zone, is going to require story poles, if it comes to us by definition now. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A short answer, I agree with Commissioner Schwartz. No reason, there's no teeth in the game here, and also with Commissioner Lodge, who said the same thing. So, the answer would be no, if we're just providing comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
I have the same answer, but a different reason, I guess, that I don't know what, well, I know what five or more units looks like, but I don't know what five units looks like on any particular parcel in a different part of the city. Everything is so specific to where it's located and what the project is, again, that I'd be interested in more information on that question, and maybe a use of both units and F A R, or what's in the surrounding neighborhood. And I, you know, it just gets grayer and grayer, I realize, the more I talk. So, my short answer is no. I think five units is just a silly number. It's really small and not. But I could see where five units in a particular location in a single-family neighborhood, in an on-the-ground type of single-family neighborhood, could be just as troublesome as a 50-unit development in somewhere else. And so, but just as you've written the question, I would say no.
Commissioner Lodge?
No.
I would say no as well. I feel as though, excuse me, I could support some form of a appeal, release valve to the commission, but I realize, though, that that would require a different kind of application, potentially. We sort of have that, or used to have that, on telecommunications projects, where if you could get through the design review boards, you'd be good to go. That's your entitlement. If not, you'd have to refile a CUP. So, I don't know, certainly not for five units, maybe for a certain unit count in R3, R4, but I don't know that we, especially after this process, or emboldening the ABR and HLC boards with more tools and sharper teeth, and especially after the Housing Task Force Committee runs its course, I don't think we'd need to see those, but it's a hard one to answer. Certainly not as presented, so, does that help? So, do you have any other questions for us? Because if you don't, I can go, maybe just one final round of quick color commentary by each of the commissioners on items we missed. But if you have specific questions for us right now, I don't see that you have any, we can just go into comments, final comments, noting that we've almost been here three hours. I don't think we have a ton more to say, but prove me wrong, Commissioner Jordan.
Start that. So, first, I'd just like to thank Tony and Jaime for letting us have some input. You know, at the end of the day, whatever we say is good, but it's somebody else who has to work with these, so you can take that for what it's worth when I offer you my opinion here. I'll stray into areas you told me not to stray in. I agree with the comment about consistent versus compatible. If you would have asked me, without looking them up, I would have totally had the meaning of those two words backwards, just as what I thought they were. You know, compatible is able to exist together without conflict, like-minded, and consistent is free from variable contradiction, unchanging. I would have totally had those reversed. So, I think it is important, probably in this particular case, to use a word that actually means what you think it's meaning, unless you really wanted the alternative meaning. I also agree with the comments you've heard here, too, generally, that if something's going to, I'm uncomfortable already with the status quo, but if something's going to come to Planning Commission, I think it should be more for comments that may or may not be taken. I have to get my lottery ticket, the chair wore a tie, and a developer said if it comes to Planning Commission, they want those comments to be part of the binding process. So, two things happened today that are just out of mind. And then, in your, I'm just going to go through really quickly, I just have a couple, exactly what you said not to do, wordsmithing suggestions. On page three, in, under building design and height, under numeral two, you say setting back a building more than the zoning ordinance requirement. Again, I don't, I think we're not talking about requirements, we're talking about allowances, not a requirement. And there's a difference there that we're entering into a process that allows something and doesn't grant something. And then, down a couple more numbers, in number four, where you talk about a high floor-to-air F A R, but there's no reference to what is high? And when does high be high, versus a high number that isn't high? Because both of those exist, and what does that really look like? And then, in number five, where you talk about plate height should relate to the size and use of the occupancy type, I also think there might be, to just add on, plus adjacent buildings or adjacent uses, because you're focusing on occupancy but not the surroundings. I talked to you before about maybe putting some intro tell-me-y lines in site planning and, or I'm sorry, in livability and privacy and in historical resources, and I think that's it. So, otherwise, I do acknowledge you're like herding too many cats into a room, and good luck with the rest of the process.
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. I really appreciate the efforts of trying to get two design boards together, and they did a great job, the individual members and subcommittees and those that volunteered, having followed that. And the tracking that was done between different renditions, and everyone understanding what was going in, and wrapping it up for City Council. So, appreciate that effort. I do want to just maybe remind everyone that we did pass a resolution here back in September, the Planning Commission, which supported the review process improving. We voted for increased support of HLC and ABR with staff reports, site visits, et cetera, analysis, additional consideration for historic resources, preparing multi-use and multi-unit mixed-use guidelines. And then, but we also wanted to write if any of these guidelines include policy or land use issues, that it should be reviewed by us prior to going to City Council. And I think that's what we did today. So, appreciate, all of us here who wanted to have this process in place, and we all had our say. And I want to thank staff for bringing it to us, and good luck when you make the final changes and go on to City Council. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Commissioner Campanella, thank you very much. It's a big work product that went into this for the design review boards. I just have a couple comments since Commissioner Jordan got into a little wordsmithing. I thought I might just tag along so he's not too embarrassed about being the only one. And on page two, where you actually do talk about compatibility, I just make a suggestion, characteristics which are distinctive of Santa Barbara and immediate neighborhood. I'm not sure what that means, that's pretty loose. That can mean a lot of things, so. And I think it was Commissioner Jordan or Commissioner Schwartz who talked about the 10 closest properties, and I think it needs to be additional properties as necessary, because I think that's very important in determining neighborhood compatibility. It can't be limited to the 10 closest properties, sometimes that really skews it. Under contextual setting there, when you're talking about compatibility, I think you could put a comma and include streetscape, surrounding structures, neighborhood features, et cetera. There are things that make up a neighborhood, parks and street trees, parkways, and I think it's important just to kind of define the contextual setting a little bit further. And then, under E, proximity to historic resources, I think it should be proximity to and... And then under E, proximity to historic resources, I think it should be proximity to and interface with historic resources, because you are discussing compatibility. So I'm just, on page four, in number 14 at the top, it's the last item under building design, height and masting. Encourage the use of traditional building materials compatible with neighborhood styles. To me, traditional imposes limits, and I think it's a subjective term. I know this is a subjective document, but encourage the use of building materials compatible with neighborhood styles, I think would be a better approach there. We've already talked about that. And under, on page five, livability and privacy, on number five, I don't understand what you mean by sense of presence. That didn't make sense to me. Is it the building's sense of presence, or is it the contextual sense of presence? So that might need a little work. There was one more thing that I had. Oh, I'm just going back to page four. At the top, on item number 12, the last sentence there is, "Consider all elevations of a project." I really think that should be a separate term. I think it should go as number 15, because I think that's crucially important to consider all, and that could get lost in that sentence. And I'll just, I'll limit it there, but it's a great start to a great work effort. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first to staff. I'm sure this is a very challenging effort that you've needed to undertake, so I want to express my appreciation. It's almost ironic to me that we're at a point with the AUD and the process of review and approval such that, I think in the end, the reason more projects were not decided to be sent to Planning Commission, or that there weren't other triggers more extensive expansive triggers, sending these projects to Planning Commission was to, quote, streamline the project. But providing the appropriate tools, filtering tools, decision-making tools. However, when I look at this, these new set of expanded guidelines, the new set of tools, so to speak, for the review boards, specifically ABR and HLC, when I look at them in their totality, I'm beginning to wonder if we're layering on additional filtering and decision-making criteria that is, in fact, maybe unintentionally, but burdening, doing the opposite of what we said we didn't want to do with these projects, further burdening both the decision-making bodies and the applicants, and therefore the end process. So I just suggest we tread carefully and very thoughtfully. Otherwise, I think that it's kind of a slippery slope in that regard for us, in terms of it accomplishing our intentions. In general, what I want to say about providing useful tools and soliciting feedback from, I'll call them stakeholder groups or constituencies, I just hope that staff is spending as much time with the internal constituencies as the external. These tools, in my opinion, have to be as useful and beneficial for our review bodies, our review boards, as external constituencies, including the applicant, the potential applicants, the regular applicants that we see, ongoing applicants. Because in the end, if it's only benefiting government or the city, and it's not helping applicants improve their understanding and preparedness and appreciation and willingness to come forward with these important housing development applications, we've defeated, we've defeated ourselves in everything that we worked on for so many years and where we are now. So I know it's time-consuming, but if you'd please continue to reach out to the external organizations and firms in our community who are following this carefully and so rely on our processes, I think that will really help us. So thank you very much.
Just to echo what everybody's already said about your work and the effort, it's fantastic, all of these items. So somebody clearly spent a lot of time with the design review boards and captured every single subject matter-related conflict or area of extended discussion on these projects, and then put those in a narrative form into this document. So you've nailed it in terms of capturing what the stumbling blocks or discussion items have been, where there's been lack of clarity. So I think it's a great job. I just, to reiterate, I think I agree with what Commissioner Schwartz is getting at. You know, the development standards that are in here, I think, are a little bit ahead of their time in terms of the rest of the procedures that are occurring in the city. We have, you know, what we do here and what we have in these planning documents that we create and deliberate are intended to provide clarity and educational opportunities for developers and applicants and decision-makers. So a lot of that is what is happening now in the form of, like what Mr. Pujot mentioned, the story poles. That's a tool now that is being applied to, at the expense of the applicants, something that will benefit this process. The Housing Task Force, obviously, we've heard quite a bit about. The NZO is going to be another set of standards that's taking a heck of a lot of time, that will relate specifically to parking and open space. The improved public noticing for tenants is another thing that's being worked on by staff that will help to inform and educate the public on these projects. The new application requirements for these projects that you're working on to ask applicants for more information, to ask them or give them more clarity on photo simulations and where those photo simulations can be useful, or how many there needs to be for the design review process. Maybe making improvements to posted notices on sites that include the illustration of what's happening on the property. And finally, this design guideline process. So I just feel as though we, it's unfortunate that we had a choppy start to this process that was started and stopped and now picked up again. With all of the other efforts that are happening now, it does just feel to me like it would be better to put a bow on this at the end of the process, especially with regard to NZO and the Housing Task Force with regard to those standards. So if, Commissioner Jordan, looks like you've got one final parting -- no, nobody else?
Do it, give me a chat.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Commissioner Lodge. Go right ahead.
You can ignore me, Chair.
No, I definitely cannot.
This effort was initiated by some of the members of HLC, and there, and as a result, new staff got involved, and then they pulled ABR in, too, and I think this has been a great effort. I know it's been a lot, it's been hard. I think there were, what, 10 meetings of the subcommittees and so on, and staff has worked really hard on it. And I think this could actually be advantageous to the applicants in that they would have a better idea of what the design review boards are looking for, and can then design their projects to fit within it, and possibly reduce the number of times that they appear before HLC or ABR. I also wanted to say that I agree with the change of consistent to compatible, and I wanted to also say that I agree with Commissioner Wiscombe's comments and her wordsmithing, and also her comments about livability and landscaping. Both of those are really tied together. I think we tend to think, we think so much about buildings and units and so on, but I don't want the city to be building what are rabbit moorings that people will move out of as fast as they possibly can. And I've seen that in this town, where the projects are not very livable. And so when people get into better circumstances, they move on. So, but I think these guidelines are going to be a help, and I'm glad to see them here.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Does anyone have any final comments or questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, not a question, but I do want to take this opportunity, as many of you have thanked staff for this work. I really want to recognize Jaime and Tony, and before Tony, Irma and Swetha was working on this effort, which we really did take the momentum of the HLC and run with that since we had an interested body to begin working on these design guidelines. And the work that they've done in just six months with no budget and with many other major work efforts going on in the division, I think is really, really great.
Okay, so this item is closed. It'll go to the HLC and ABR in the form of staff's revised comments, back to them for their adoption, and then on to the council, and perhaps there's a review opportunity at the Housing Task Force level, too. We'll find out. Let's move on to administrative agenda. Committee and liaison reports. Is your light on?
No, but I am ready.
Commissioner Jordan.
So I haven't watched yesterday's staff hearing officer. I'll watch it this weekend, but didn't see anything on there that looked like it was going to rise to an issue. And then just some quick points over from today's Water Commission meeting. The, one of the big disconnects out there in the public, of course, is that it's raining and Kachuma's up about 10%, but as of today, there's still no project water for the five cities in Kachuma because the San Ynez River is not flowing yet. So they're actually hoping that that changes this weekend with this big storm, that we'll get some flow, consistent flow in the San Ynez River, and then start to accumulate actual water we can use in Lake Kachuma from runoff. You heard a little bit in the news about the San Luis Reservoir, when it started to spill, that we were going to lose a bunch of water there. It started to spill today, but earlier this week or last week, we penned a deal with some other agencies that had water there to move that water to the LA Metropolitan Water District. We gave up a third of that water in order to do that, to get them to move it and store it for us, but we'll get two-thirds of that water back, which was a better deal than losing all of it. DSal pumps are up and going and in testing right now as we speak, and we're now saying that the first glass of water will be sometime in April this year. The talks with Montecito Water District are still going on, and they, from what's said, they're still on track, that they will become, again, a partner in the DSal. You've heard me talk before about the conveyance pipeline that needs to get the water from the DSal up to somewhere near Mission Street in order to serve the upper half of the city, and that's going to council next week or the week after to start scoping on that, to get that in place, anticipating that if that drought bullseye stays on us despite the current rainy season, that we will need to be feeding DSal to the entire city, not just the lower half of the city. And that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Committee and liaison reports. Nothing from HLC or ABR. Okay, that concludes our hearing, and we will adjourn until March 2nd, where we will talk about the NZO, and that hearing time is 4:00 PM. Okay, thank you, everybody.